This now two o'clock. Let's go ahead and get started. All right, let's call the order of the Spark City Council meeting for July twelfth. Man, the month already gone by, quick. And start with the real call.
Mayor Lawson.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Vanderwell.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
City Attorney Adams. City Manager Coots.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, and we have invocation by Pastor David Solomon, all. Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of this city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are but stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters. Confident in your goodness and love. Amen. Please remain standing, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Dare, would you lead us?
Sure, please join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're gonna move on to item four point one. And we'll start with. You do not wish to speak, Mr. Day? Well, come up here. Come on down. And then, uh, let's see, and then Mark Markle. Be next.
Okay. Did I push a button or anything?
If it's green, you're good.
I'm good. Hi, everybody, uh, just to introduce myself, my name is Michael Day. I'm a past president of the Rotary Club of Sparks. And I'm here with President Mark Elston to officially see and watch the city council in action and to see the approval of the, uh, whatever needs to be done for our, uh, that special needs playground that we've been working on for about the last six years at Sparks Marina. Um, I, I see other representatives are here from the Reno Rodeo Foundation, which, uh, have been a huge benefactor towards this project. And, uh, I just am excited and honored to have been, play a major or a minor part in this whole process. And I want to thank you guys for, uh, seeing this through. So, that's it, let's get her built.
Yep, thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Mark Markle, is somebody gonna bring a microphone back to Mark?
I have, right here.
You got it? Turn it on.
Can you hear me?
Is it on, Julie?
Okay, hey.
Hey.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city manager, and city attorneys. And this, uh, my name is Mark Markle, I'm a county attorney in Nevada, resident. I don't talk well, cause I was involved in a drunk driving crash back in eighty-nine, where I was a passenger. And we were doing a hundred, and it rolled eight times. And I was ejected, and the car landed on my head. And, and it put me in a coma for a month. But I hope you can understand me, I, 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 I wanna be an example of the dangers of getting, what can happen to a person who drives with a drunk driver. I was a passenger. And, and I, I can't walk now, I can't talk very well. And, and it, it, it's just a foolish thing to get in a car. It's, it's bad enough that you drink and drive, that's stupid. But to drive, to ride with a drunk driver, drive with a drunk driver, is, is a big mistake. And I just wanna be an example, I, 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 I bring down, so I don't talk well, I can't think right. I, I just, I just wanna be an example of what can happen if you do it, understand, but why take the chance? It's, it, it, you, okay, thank you, please don't do this, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Very well done. Uh, Diana Black, followed by George Coombs.
Council members, Mr. Mayor. It's been a while since I've been here, so I might be a little slow here. But I've lived in Sparks for over twenty years. And I have seen Sparks deteriorate a lot. People don't take care of their houses anymore. There's weeds, junk cars in the backyards, the front yards, trash thrown all over, uh, pieces of furniture throwed all over. And in our neighborhood, we've been trying to get people to clean up their yards and stuff. And, um, also, I notice when the city of Sparks did the, the fancy, uh, lights down on Prater Way and did some of the landscaping, nobody's taking care of that. I don't know if you have somebody that does that, or what the deal was on it. But there's trash, dog feces, and I don't know what all down there, all of that. And also, we have a big problem with the dogs and the feces. Over there where they built all the apartments, the brand new apartments on Victorian, it is so bad over there, it stinks. They're not picking up their dog stuff or anything, and it's horrible. Also, um, our road on Seventh Street hasn't been done in thirty years. There's no excuse for that. What are we paying our taxes for? And the redo roads, it's already been redone. So. Also, um, I feel that some of the weeds and stuff belong to the city of Sparks, and they're not taking care of theirs either. Also, people's yards and stuff like that. So I hope it gets better, because it hasn't improved that much in twenty years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. George Coombs, followed by Alexis Odart. Did I, I, am I gonna say it right?
Good afternoon, I'm George Combs, I'm the general manager of Reno Rodeo. Reno Rodeo Association, uh, I believe two years ago, made a substantial donation of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for this whole abilities program through our special kids funding, through our association. And that's what Reno Rodeo is all about, is giving back in the community and giving back to the kids, not only through the association, but also the foundation. And the association, we do the special kids projects through ours, through, through the tips and stuff that we get at the rodeo at different, different places and, and different things, and we donate those all back. And, and then we find it, uh, to give it to the, back in the community. And this, uh, project that you had, uh, that we, I think it was two years ago, pre-COVID anyway, and, uh, we were able to, uh, donate a hundred and twenty thousand to, to help the Sparks Rotary. I know they donated a substantial amount also. And, uh, we just wanted to see it go through and see it happen. And, uh, you know, we've, uh, we've all had a tough year last year, and, uh, one thing I can say about this year is we're back, and we had a great event, a great rodeo. And, uh, we're back to stay now, so we're excited.
George, did I hear correctly that you guys sold out ten nights in a row?
That is correct.
That's awesome.
Yeah, we were completely full. We've seen every record of Reno Rodeo broken this year. Concessions, carnival, attendance, attendance on the grounds. It was record across the board, so, but the expenses are also record. Things are a lot more expensive this year than they were two years ago, so. Um, and we're getting, we're working through them processes now, and hopefully within the next month or so, we'll have an idea. But, uh, I can tell you that we, uh, we did a lot better than not having a rodeo, uh, like we did in twenty twenty, so, uh, it was a great year. But thank you.
Thanks for all you guys do, too.
Thanks.
Alexis, I, I'm gonna mess this up. Can you say your last name for me?
It's Motor X.
Motor X.
Just like it's spelled.
Okay, I thought it was a French name.
It's, it's tricky. It just almost rhymes with my first name, so that's an easy way to remember.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Alexis Motor X with the Nevada chapter AGC, representing the commercial construction industry in northern Nevada. AGC is in strong support of item nine point one on today's agenda. This proposed amendment extending construction hours and modifying the duration of a TUP as it relates to construction hours protects, protects the health and safety of our crews working outside during the hottest months of the year and gives our members the flexibility they need to complete projects in the most efficient manner with the least impact on the general public. On behalf of AGC, I would like to thank Mr. Rundle and all of your staff who've worked with us on this very important issue. We encourage your support when it is brought back for a second reading and vote next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Plastino. Did that one right?
Yeah.
Thanks, like it sounds, also.
Good afternoon, um, my name's Joe Plastino. Um, I'm the owner of the Anytime Fitness up in Spanish Springs at, um, at the Pioneer Meadows Marketplace, Marketplace on, uh, Wingfield Hills Road. I'm here to let you know I'm strongly in support of adding self-storage as a permitted use. I think that's number eleven, agenda item eleven on the list. While we and the other Pioneer Meadow Marketplace businesses have worked hard to succeed at this location, this last year has been pretty rough on a lot of us, but, and particularly on gyms as well. Um, it'd really help our ability to compete significantly if some additional uses were developed at the center. Adding another high demand option like self-storage will, um, and finally help that area get built out, cause I know there's some pretty empty space there that is seeking a home for some other type of businesses. And that would be really good for us by adding some traffic as well for all the businesses in the area. So, we've been here for quite some time in the area, and we want to be here for a lot longer. And you approving this would, um, help get us a little bit more traffic and, and improve our business. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, does anyone else wish to comment on item four point one?
I don't have any other cards at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, seeing none. We're gonna move on to, uh, item five point one, approval of the agenda. We gotta go to current items to see that. Diane Vanderwell. This computer's slow, so.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda.
Ms. Bybee.
Uh, my second motion, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Most carries, Christopher voted no.
I'm a yes. I didn't go.
Christopher, it comes up abstain.
I'm a yes. I, I came from CHAB, I was gonna say yay.
All right, we'll change the record to a unanimous vote. All right, uh, approval of the minutes, six point one, for June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one. I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott.
I moved to approve the minutes of the Spark City Council meeting for June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Dare.
Second.
Got a motion to second any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. I got one more. Christopher says you voted.
Paul, Paul, you did it, yeah.
I, I didn't hit abstain. Something, something's going on with it.
Let's, we'll correct the record to show a unanimous vote in favor. All right, uh, moving on, uh, announcements, presentation recognition items, and items of special interest, presentation dis, and discussion regarding the eighty-first session of the Nevada Legislature and the legislation affecting the city of Sparks. We have Allison and Mr. Mike Hillerby.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and City Council, for the record. I'm Allison McCormick, your Assistant City Manager for Management Services. With me today, as you said, Mayor Lawson, is Mike Hillerby. He's the Director of Legislative Affairs at Kemper Crowell, the city's contracted lobbying firm. And with that brief introduction, I'll turn things over to Mike, who will, uh, update the council on this past session and what he and his team will be doing in the interim.
Great, thank you very much, again, Michael Hillerby with Kemper Crowell. Thank you so much for the opportunity to represent my community. It was a great privilege, uh, and something we're enjoying a lot, uh, me personally and, and the team. Um, want to thank Mayor Lawson, Councilmember Bybee, our Legislative Committee of your council, uh, for being available and, and providing, uh, guidance and answering questions. And then Neil and Allison in particular, uh, always there to answer questions quickly. Uh, Allison did a great job of sort of understanding the fights that we ought to pick and not to pick. Uh, when, as you all know, in local government, seemingly everything that comes before the legislature might have some sort of impact, uh, be it taxes, energy issues, labor law, a, all the way down the line, the budget have an impact. We tracked over four hundred bills. Most of those had no direct impact, but all of them have, are potentials for amendments, have some potent, potential impact on, again, labor law development, housing, you name it. Um, a, a number of those didn't pass, but it was a busy session. Just really quickly to give an overview, um, it, it was a unique session in a number of ways, mostly because of the remote nature, uh, under which we conducted most of the session because of COVID. That did make it challenging, uh, to have that opportunity to educate legislators, limitations on testimony, um, having to sign up in advance, um, limitations particularly in opposition testimony in some committees. Um, some were a little more open than others, and how that worked. Uh, it, so again, did create some challenges once we were able to get in the building. That helped a little bit, as you all know, the, to be able to kind of read the room and get a sense of the energy and who's there, and why they might be there is an important part of this, uh, the art of this process. Uh, but we eventually did get in the building, and, and, and that was helpful. The, I think the question at the, um, one of the many questions at the opening of the session was whether to have a, uh, limited scope for that session because of the difficulties of, of COVID and the remote nature of it, or to attempt to tackle lots of issues. And it became clear fairly quickly, we're gonna, they were gonna tackle lots of issues. We're not gonna let COVID slow down, so, um, you know, things from public safety and voting to you name it, that might have, uh, potentially been put on the back burner to wait for another session because of the challenges with COVID and things to the budget, but it ended up being really a pretty full session. We didn't see quite as many bills introduced, uh, but nearly the same number, uh, as in previous sessions. Great deal of uncertainty at the beginning, particularly, uh, regards to the budget, federal dollars, uh, that impact on reelections and talk about, whether, whether you talk about taxes or not. Uh, mostly meant revenue was largely off the table, particularly, uh, again, as it became apparent how much of the federal money was coming in, and the economic forums, uh, projections on what our regular tax sources were going to do. Uh, except, of course, for the big one, the mining tax that happened in the last few days of the session. It was an ongoing discussion for the full four months, uh, a way to kind of keep those ballot questions from potentially going onto the ballot. And, and interesting to have an industry supporting a tax on itself to avoid having that go to a, a, a more public ballot question where you tend to lose control of things. And that had just, again, just finally came together during the, the waning hours of the session. One of the things that we were following obviously closely along with every other local government in the state, NACO, the League of Cities, was the idea of some kind of a study on the challenges of funding government, particularly local funding and the limitations on that. There were two different ideas, uh, one from League of Cities, one from NACO. Again, once it became clear that for a whole host of regions, um, a, a looming reelection campaign for, for some, and, and election in twenty twenty-two, uh, and, and the fact that there was, at least for the short term, a reasonable amount of money, didn't seem to be much appetite for having an in-depth discussion about potentially raising taxes. So that really went off the table, uh, any sort of study. I'll come back in a little bit to what may be going on in this interim. Uh, that may open that window a little bit. Another theme, and it's not a new one to any of you that have been in local government for any, any amount of time, and certainly one we've seen for, for many years, a, a general, I think, lack of understanding, and, and to some extent, frankly, a lack of respect for the job that you all have to do as elected officials. Um, that's certainly not the case with, with all legislators. I think we're very lucky. Our representatives that represent the city of Sparks, uh, one of them's here. I just saw, uh, Assemblywoman Anderson in the, in the audience. Senator Ratty, um, I'll, I'll, don't wanna name everybody for fear of leaving them out, but both Senator Hansen, Assemblywoman Hansen, Assemblywoman Dickman. Others, great, always checked in with us, asking how things were going with the city. Uh, and that was great. You don't always see that across the board in the legislature, and that remains a challenge and one we want to, again, talk about moving forward. Uh, one-party rule always makes things interesting. When you have, uh, majorities in one party in both set, both houses of the legislature and the governor's office, it always creates a, a, a di- di- difficult dynamic. Interestingly, most people don't understand that difficulty mostly is within the party in charge. I'm seeing that whether it be Republicans or Democrats, so it's not a partisan comment. Uh, it's very tough for people to realize when you're in charge of everything, doesn't mean you're all going to get everything you want. Uh, and we certainly saw that play out in this legislature. Uh, some back and forth between what you would, I guess, consider more traditional or, um, mainstream Democrats, more progressive, uh, elements that are, are coming to fore across the country. So you always see that na- dynamic play out. Again, not a partisan comment, you see the same things when Republicans have been in charge all the way across the board, so a push between, uh, the more conservative, uh, one faction or another. The, because of, of Democratic majorities, clearly, you had unions, trial lawyers, uh, teachers' unions, education funding, all at the fore. So you, we saw a lot of issues there. Um, and then some tough issues, uh, that dominated a lot of the session, uh, an attempt to repeal the death penalty, uh, right-to-return law for people who've been laid off that affected the, primarily the casino, and a public option in healthcare. Um, the other thing I just noticed I would make is I think more and more we're seeing really all of those major issues become, um, campaign exercises. Uh, it becomes less about the policy and the discussion in that building than more about grassroots campaigning that's going on outside. Uh, I think some of that is, is a reflection of term limits and just the way things have changed. So just kind of a different way, uh, heard comments from some of my colleagues, it changes the way you operate in that building. Um, some of that's the term limit, some of that's just the modern changes in the way politics works. Um, so all of that were sort of things that were going on during the session. Um, I know you have a lot on the agenda. I'm gonna try to quickly go through a few kind of major subjects that I know some of you have identified and, and your staff, to talk about a few of the bills, um, during the session. I would be happy to answer some questions and talk briefly about sort of looking ahead, what we see in the interim and some work that needs to be done. A number of bills on housing, I'll just talk about a, a couple of those. Some will be, um, fairly technical, that, uh, the very competent Mr., um, Arnellis and the staff will work on, uh, electronic filing of maps, um, those kinds of things. Uh, one new bill would require, um, with some exceptions, tentative subdivision maps to be submitted to the Department of Wildlife for review on impact on wildlife. Their comments would, uh, need to be considered by Planning Commission and Council as you consider new developments. Uh, just says they have to be considered, doesn't say you have to agree with them or not, but it's a, another step in there, and we'll see what that does. And again, I think your, your, uh, planning staff and others to take a look at that and see what that does in terms of timing of those applications, uh, and what that does for people that are proposing those. AB three sixty-three got a lot of press, that was the short-term rental bill, uh, i.e. Airbnb and Verbo and those kinds of, of platforms. It ended up becoming only effective in Clark County. That's where really the largest fight was taking place. You saw those companies square up against the, the casinos in particular, who were feeling some, uh, competitive pressure from them. So for the moment, anyway, uh, that is limited to, uh, Clark County. I would say that is indicative of kind of a theme through this session, again, where, um, an, an attempt by the legislature to step into something that has historically been local, and you, one might argue ought to be local decisions, where they're being made, uh, closest to the people who have to live with the consequences. And, and you, uh, at the ballot, uh, cause you get to live with those voters and how pleased they are. But it was something the state felt, uh, some members of the legislature felt very strongly about, so it was something they tackled, uh, in the end, just because of the political reality of trying to wrangle votes that became of Clark County and the major cities, uh, with the larger populations there. Couple of changes to planned unit developments. One of those would allow some, uh, some plan modifications to be approved without a public hearing, not mandated, but provides that option. Again, I know it's something your staff will be looking at and making some, uh, recommendations moving forward. Another on the theme of local control, SB one fifty was one we were involved with all through the session. That was the tiny houses bill. The bill requires tiny houses to be included, uh, in three different ways in zoning. That ended also being limited to, uh, cities with populat, cities or counties with populations over a hundred and fifty thousand. So we're not included in that at this point. Uh, but it's again, another one of those that despite a lot of work through the urban consortium, through all of us, uh, county and local governments trying to explain, particularly when you get down to those kinds of zoning decisions, those ought to be in front of you, who are elected by the people who have to live in those communities, uh, that ultimately fell on deaf ears, and, and that bill moved forward. Um, don't expect that that issue necessarily goes away. I'll jump to public safety, uh, probably the, the areas that got the most attention during the session and the most publicity. AB one sixteen, which makes most, most traffic offenses civil infractions rather than misdemeanors. Um, that was coupled with another bill that would require, a couple of other bills would require, pre-trial release hearings within forty-eight hours of arrest. Uh, generally requires citations for, instead of arrests for most, uh, misdemeanors. Exceptions include repeat offenses, violations of a protective order, stalking, uh, restriction, suspended driver's license, or a crime of violence. Um, in the traffic laws, um, some of the things generally that would be considered civil infractions, not misdemeanors, therefore not subject to things like, um, driver's license suspension if the fines are not paid, carrying people in the bed of a pickup truck, driving in a carpool lane with too few passengers, uh, talking on a cell phone while driving, lower level speeding, uh, bicycling in a prohibited area, a few others. Some of the things that would still be treated as misdemeanors, driving more than thirty miles an hour above the speed limit, aggressive driving, driving on a sidewalk, failed to yield to an emergency vehicle. Again, I know, uh, both your city attorney's office, the courts, the police will be looking at that and how to, to do that implementation. Most of that will not take effect until January first of twenty twenty-three, so it's some, some ways down, and there'll be some time to sort of figure out what that means. Again, in the theme of local government versus state government and being a Dillon's rural state, one of the key pieces in the debate about that became, and a couple of these other bills, what was the fiscal impact gonna be on, on county and city governments? You saw wildly different numbers. Um, some of that was because our communities are very different. Um, Sparks is different than Las Vegas. A rural community is gonna be different than an urban community. Um, some of that, however, uh, was reflective that, and, and gave legislators an opportunity to say, we frankly don't put a lot of, um, faith in those numbers cause we're not sure you guys are doing a very good job in coming up with those. Not sure you're accurately, uh, assess the budgetary impact. Key in that particular one was the idea that if we were in fact not arresting people, holding them over the weekend, we were gonna see a significant decrease in expenses. And some concern from legislators that were pushing those bills, that that should have been included in the fiscal notes. So again, sort of in this theme and some, some education that we need to do, and, and the best we can as, as local governments to talk about making sure that we have the cred- credibility when we are in talking about those issues. Um, jaywalking is another one, that will now be a citation-only offense, no arrests. Uh, strong belief and experience from particularly minority communities that things like jaywalking, speeding tickets, low-level traffic citations that had, uh, the opportunity for suspended driver's licenses and, and the fine collection to be enforced that way really became an unfortunate entry point in the criminal justice system for people that could spiral pretty easily. So that was one of the main arguments in, in favor of those bills. Uh, toward the end, uh, another bill, and we're kind of wait to see how, how the impact, uh, with AB one sixteen on the traffic citations. SB two nineteen removes the ability of a court to suspend a driver's license or prohibit a defendant from applying for a driver's license when there are outstanding court fees or fines of any sort. So that'll be interesting to see what impact that has. Again, a, a belief among proponents that, um, that hurdle makes it really hard for them people to be able to drive to get to their job. How do you raise the money to pay the fee or fine you own? If you don't have a driver's license, you can't get to your job. So those are some of the arguments, and I don't want to oversimplify that because it was a significant debate. Uh, I know cannabis laws were of interest to the council. The, the big one, uh, would be, uh, consumption lounges. Um, that was AB three forty-one, a whole lot of work on that, and a lot of work from all of our local government partners, us included, to be sure that, um, the requirements there sort of met, uh, what made sense, uh, in, in making that harmonize a bit with retail marijuana establishments now. And perhaps most importantly, making sure that, um, local government still has control to make those, uh, individual decisions, whether to approve or not to approve cannabis consumption lounges. I think we're already seeing some agendas posted in the last few days from some local government seeking to generally pass ordinances that would not allow consumption lounges. Those would fall in, uh, one of two categories. They could be attached and owned by licensees of current retail marijuana establishments, and those that are for new licensees and a piece there that particularly needed to be for disadvantaged communities. Um, we've seen fairly low minority ownership, um, in the cannabis world, and also for people who have been disproportionately affected by our old cannabis laws that would see you arrested and, and prosecuted for, um, possession of small amounts of marijuana. So hopefully it allows- So hopefully it allows some of those people to get into the, the business itself. One would allow, SB 168 would allow for curbside pickup at cannabis consumption lounges. Again, local governments may also prohibit that, that's an individual decision, location by location, based on zoning and other criteria that you would have. So before anybody could add curbside pickup, they would need to come and make sure that was appropriate through the planning and zoning and commission council process. To be sure that was something that you thought met with the larger public interest. The cannabis events bill died, that simply became kind of a bridge too far for most of the legislature, trying to figure out how you would do an event, how you police it, how you keep it from spilling outside the boundaries of the events, literally or figuratively, through smoke and other things, what do you do with public safety, zoning officials, others? How do you protect people? Just way too many questions to figure out how to do the events, and that one kind of died under, under the weight of that when it was over. Couple of other bills, and then I'll stop and, and be happy to answer questions to the extent I can, and then talk a little bit about moving forward. Another, an opportunity potentially for us, AB 1, which passed would require as a part of new legislator orientation and training, specific training in local governments. So I think that's one where we will work with our other partners, work with the League of Cities, NACO, really try to do a good job about who's going to do that presentation and new legislator training, that typically happens in the November, December timeframe before each session. And hopefully that's an opportunity where we can help tell the story, put a little, a little better face, make sure they know and see us as the kind of partners we believe we are with the state. AB 385 was put in that would put some limitation in rules on fringe benefits, bonuses, severance package on public employees. Were required that you do things if you're going to award a bonus to higher, higher-paid employees, that those happen at a public meeting. That you have evaluation criteria, things like that, those were, that bill was put in in, in response to some frustration by legislators with a couple of instances in particular, but it's one that's going to filter down. I think not much within the City of Sparks in terms of the way you've done your hiring practices with key positions, but that is something that's out there. And again, I think in keeping with that theme of, does the legislature feel as though they can trust local governments to always make those decisions? SB 82 was our bill from the Sparks Charter Committee. Again, want to specifically thank Senator Ratty for sponsoring that. Bob LaRiviere from the Charter Committee and Wes Duncan from the City Attorney's Office who came to the hearings and did a great job explaining that, that bill did pass unanimously. SCR 11 was the final outcome of the Innovation Zones Bill that got a lot of publicity during the session, was ultimately not introduced in the form it was talked about. That became a study, it has legislative members, that study, recommendations from that study are due December 31st of this year. Committee has not started meeting yet and has not been named, but expect we'll see that fairly soon. We haven't seen any of the interim committees staffed or named or, or calendars out yet. Again, I mentioned at the beginning, a variety of labor law, workers' comp changes. Want to thank Allison who got in with your staff, did a good job of trying to determine impacts on us and things where we wanted to engage individually through the Urban Consortium, through the League of Cities and others, so that was good. Couple of bills that were vetoed, one, AB 368, that would have banned the use of tourism improvement districts in all but Clark County. In the governor's veto letter, he pointed out while the focus was of the debate was largely about sports stadiums, tournament, tourism improvement districts. That increment funding has been, can be used for curbs, gutters, swimming pools, streetlights, all sorts of things, and has been advantageous to communities. So he felt as though the removal of that tool and a blanket way from so many municipalities and the potential good things that it could do were worthy of a veto. And lastly, AB 65, an ethics and government bill, a hallmark and the thing that created the veto. That would have created three new ethics commission within the legislative branch, one for the assembly, one for the senate, and one for staff. The governor felt like that was not an appropriate separation of powers and no need to create that many when we had an ethics commission. And already a number of court cases where things done within the purview and scope and practice of your legislative job are already covered by the legislature, but no reason to set up a whole new process, so. There were only four bills vetoed, but those two I thought would be of interest to you. I will stop there to see if there are specific questions about any of the specific bills, and then talk a little bit about what things look like moving forward. Great, I'll keep moving. Looking ahead, we will see a different interim process than we have ever seen before. The legislature this time passed and the governor signed a bill that was previously vetoed by then-Governor Sandoval. That matches up the legislature's interim committees with their standing committees during the session. So for the first time, for example, the Government Affairs Committee will meet all during the interim, revenue, Congress and Labor, judiciary. All of those committees will meet with all of the members. They will each have a minimum of 10 bill draft requests available to them. So the, in Governor Sandoval's veto letter, he pointed out his belief that that started to look a lot like a full-time legislature. It with the possibility of getting myself in trouble with Assemblywoman Anderson, I, I tended to agree with Governor Sandoval, that does look a lot like a full-time legislature. The argument, of course, is when they only meet four months out of every two years in a growing state, it makes it difficult to get things done. What that means is, and we had this discussion on the Government Affairs Call with the League of Cities last week, I think it does potentially present us some opportunities to get in front of the Government Affairs Committee during the interim when there's a little less on their agenda and going on, and opportunity hopefully to be together in person from local governments. And talked about potentially asking to be on that agenda to spend a little more time in the local government world, educating them about what we do. And again, hopefully create a partnership where they see us as equal partners with them and responding to your, your constituents. Because they are obviously constituents of our legislators as well. So that will be interesting, it's going to change the nature of the dynamic to some extent. We know we will have at least one special session for redistricting. The numbers were not available in time for the legislature to tackle that, so that will be done in a special session. No definitive time, but the most common rumor has been sometime this fall. There was a lot of talk about whether we will or will not have a special session to deal with the budget, and in particular, the significant amount of money that came in from the federal government for care's relief. Right at the end of the session, the legislature did pass a bill that would give a great deal of authority to the Interim Finance Committee, or the Members of Senate Finance and Assembly Ways and Means, that have always met during the interim to approve, make appropriations, essentially decisions for things like new federal grants, other kinds of money that might come in, or the need for agencies to move money between accounts based on unexpected circumstances, to allow them to make most of those decisions. I think there is very limited, from what we're hearing, desire to have a special session on the budget on, from the senate's perspective. And I think that's probably true for the governor's office, they feel like they've got the tools in place to do that. And perhaps a little more on the assembly, desire to do that, to make sure there's a little more direct legislative involvement in that, rather than just the limited number of legislators on those two committees. So that remains an open question. Term limits and legislative turnover have been an issue for a number of years since term limits were put in place. We know, we, we lost a number of legislators to term limits this time. Unfortunately, Senator Ratty's made the decision not to run, she was not facing term limits, but has just made the decision that she's ready to, to move on to other things outside the legislature. So that would be a loss in terms of experience and some history, long history with the City of Sparks as a council member and very involved in this community. So we'll continue to see, there may be yet others that will decide they don't want to run. One of the interesting things about this dynamic between the legislature and local government is how many legislators leave to then go run for local government offices, particularly in Southern Nevada. And, and one would think you might be thinking a little further ahead about limiting your own future power. That does not normally have, I have not normally seen that play out, but it's always been an interesting dynamic to me. One of the other ones that will probably be of interest to us, the first meeting is tomorrow. Couple of bills that involve the Nevada Department of Transportation, one is an ongoing funding and feasibility study group to look at the stability of that funding. As all of you know, vehicle miles traveled goes up while fuel tax revenue goes down because of increased fuel efficiency. General cafe standards across the fleet, hybrid vehicles, electric vehicles, that's going to do nothing but get worse as more hybrid and electric vehicles and more high-mileage vehicles get on the road. So that affects NDOT, sort of at the top level, affects RTC down, or doing a lot of regional roads, and affects local governments and, and your own budgets to do those. So that'll be an interesting one to keep an eye on, there was some work this last session that was, the SCR 3 Committee was tasked with making some recommendations of what, what to do with alternative fuel vehicles. They ultimately punted, and so we've not made any real decision yet as a state about what to do and what appropriate funding and fees might look like for alternative fuel vehicles to have them contribute something equivalent to what a similar vehicle would do in the gas tax. So that will be of interest, I think, to all local and state governments and one that will be watching. And get, just looking forward to how do we hopefully improve on the situation we saw in that dynamic between state and local government. Again, it's one we've seen play out for years. Legislative education, again, while we've been, I think, very fortunate as the City of Sparks, we have a delegation that very proud of their hometown. That, that Sparks spirit has always been prevalent for all of us that live here. So I think we have a better relationship than some of the other communities, particularly in Southern Nevada, that remains a challenge. So we will be a part of doing that legislative oriented education. In talking with the other members of the Urban Consortium, again, I want to say, commend you, I think that was a good decision to stay involved and have that relationship with Las Vegas, Henderson, and us in the City of Reno. I think that good group that worked together well could kind of choose who was going to take on which fights. Sometimes the legislators get tired of seeing all of us on the same issues. Working with that group as well, one of the things we talked about was the need to do more peer-to-peer education, relationship building between you all and your elected colleagues in the legislature, and I think that would help. So that's one, one of the things we'll be working on. And again, with local governments, sometimes the specific becomes the general. So if a local government is seen as thumbing its nose at the legislature doing something with, that might not be very popular at the moment, and in any given time, for better or for worse, there's probably some local government doing that. From the rural areas to Southern Nevada at the moment, it's probably a couple in Southern Nevada, and I think they would admit that, that are making the paper sometimes for the wrong reasons. How do we make sure that the legislature understands that is not indicative of every local government? And you all have done a particularly good job of trying to manage and be responsible to your own community. So that'll be one of the things that we want to continue to do. And again, work with the, the League, the Urban Consortium, and to the extent we can, and there's, there's a good relationship there with NACO, because we do have a lot of the same interests, so. Again, I will end there, and I would thank you again for the opportunity to represent the City of Sparks, it, it is a great pleasure to do that. Enjoy working with your staff, and we're here to continue to help and answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, I would just like to thank you and your team, obviously Allison and Neil and our legislative committee, the mayor and myself. But your team did a great job in really trying circumstances and being in a place as we all have been in last year. With COVID, really pivoting and learning how to do everything we do in life different, differently than before. And so the challenges of not, was very frustrating for me that we as, not just local electives, but we, the people of the state of Nevada, were not allowed into the legislature. And that's, that's kind of a little frightening to me, that, that public voice, that public face that is always, has always been there, wasn't there. So for you and your team to work with that the best they could, and when they did open it, to make sure you had people in there and you were communicating with legislators on the different bills that were going to affect Sparks. I appreciate your ability to be so nimble and work as we could. I also really appreciate, I think, us doing the Urban Consortium with the, with Henderson, Las Vegas, Reno, and Sparks was a really smart thing because we brought a bigger voice to the table. And it also, I think, was helpful because Henderson and Vegas show north versus south, and the two bigger cities in each region, you know, and those of us that are a little bit smaller, kind of really understanding how many things we have in common, and how many of those bills, how much of the work the legislature is doing affects all of us in some way, and maybe differently for Vegas than for Sparks, and certainly different than the rurals. But I think that team together was really, was a great move, and I think it's something I would encourage us to continue to do. And obviously, I know you will keep a surprise during the special session, whatever we need to know as, as things move on, but thank you for your time. It, it was unusual, but it was, it was good work, and I, I appreciated working with you.
Thank you for the.
Mr. Adams. Is there any discussion in the legislature about curbing the governor's emergency powers or getting the legislature involved whenever there's a prolonged emergency?
Thank you, Mike Hillerby. Attorney Adams, there, there was some discussion, no, no real introduction to meaningful legislation, no real debate on that. A number of those attempts came from the Republican minority, and I think they were seen, whether they were or not, as more political moves than, than a reason of a policy discussion. And again, I think you can never, from divorce politics completely from that kind of discussion, particularly when you have one party. So I think there was some, some protection of the governor from Democratic majorities, but no meaningful, and, and just from a, a raw politics point of view, that's a tough one for the legislature, do you want to become responsible for all those decisions? Because certainly the governor got beat up pretty, pretty widely for his, so. That's probably human nature, do I really want to ask for this problem? Because then I might be, I might have to answer for the decision, so some of that, I think, went on behind that as well.
That's too bad, it sounds like a real lack of courage on behalf of the legislature. I mean, they're elected by the people to protect the people, and if they are afraid of negative publicity or comments simply because they decide to take on a strong issue, that, that really speaks volumes about the integrity of our legislature. Okay, Mr. Dare.
Yes, I, I want to encourage what you said a minute ago about making sure we have peer-to-peer. We, we definitely have a lot of new and welcome, by the way, I know you're, you've done, thanks for being here, a, a lot of newer legislators and things. And we, I, I, I'm going to be the optimist and say, if they really knew our hearts and they really understood where we were coming from, that I think that this might go a lot better. But it does take time and relationship, and, and I, I, we, we've been down there for different things, and I find a lot of times they have no idea what it is that we're, we are walking through or our perspective. And I would love to make sure that's there, so, and I say that really with all my heart, thank you for being here, and in other meetings we've been in. But just making sure that that's clear and, and that we're willing to do that, because I think that that's maybe one of the questions too, do we, are we interested? So we are interested in hearing their perspective as well.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else from the council wishing to speak? Mike, thank you very much, it was, Charlie, trying to run a government in the dark is, is pretty difficult. It's difficult enough running it every other year, but it's really difficult every other year in the dark, so.
Yeah, again, thank you for the opportunity, and I know, or Assemblywoman Anderson up here, she would say it was certainly difficult for legislators too. They spent the first couple of months really just about locked in their offices, you know, a lot of concern for vaccinations were widely available and other things, a lot of questions, so I know it was very challenging for them as well. It was a challenge for everybody and a, and a learning experience for sure, so again, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item eight point, eight consent items, anyone wish to take a consent item, pull it, if not, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Dare.
I move to approve the consent items 8.1 and 8.2.
Mr. Anderson.
Second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion, seeing none, please vote. Most carries unanimously. Okay, moving on, 9.1, this is a first reading, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is the first reading of Bill 2785 in ordinance to amend Title 20, Chapter 20.04.005 intensity standards and 20.03.040 temporary uses of the Sparks Municipal Code to amend permitted hours of construction and provide an administrative mechanism to permit out, working outside of the hours of construction for special circumstances. A public hearing will be held and Bill 2785 will be acted upon at the regular meeting of the Sparks City Council on Monday, August 9th, 2021 at 2:00 PM at the Sparks City Council Legislative Building.
Okay, moving on to 9.2, consideration discussion of possible approval of professional services contract AC 5788 with West Coast Code Consultant, consultants, excuse me, in an amount not to exceed $140,000 for fire plans review and FY 22.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
How are you?
Members of council, for the record, my name is Chris McCovens, and I am our marshal for the City of Sparks Department. Today I am seeking consideration and approval for continuing the contract with WC3 or West Coast Consultants for fire plan review. Some of the key points that this contract provides the city and the development community is a timely plan review for the del, the development community and meets our 10-day turnaround goal. This also provides the development community a consistent plan review process and provides engineering support to fire staff. The contract does supplement department staff and is paid at only as needed, not to exceed $140,000. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Questions from the council? Seeing none, looking for a motion. Ms. Vanderwell?
I move to approve the professional services contract AC-5788 with West Coast Code Consultants Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $140,000 for building permit, plan review, and inspection services in FY 22.
Mr. Anderson?
I second.
Okay, any further discussion, seeing none, please vote. Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, item nine point three, consideration discussion, possible approval of construction contract AC 5789 with Garden Shop Nursery Landscaping Division for the Marina All Abilities Playground. Construction bid number 202120, PWP hashtag WA 2021 dash 283, in the amount of $841,707 and no cents.
That's a mouthful.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members, members of the City Council. For the record, my name's Brian Kason, the Capital Projects Manager. Do we have the attachments that? Yeah, it's not open. While she's doing that, very excited to present this project. It's been a long time coming. It's for the, of course, the Marina All Abilities Playground Construction Project. It's located here at the northwest corner of the Sparks Marina, the corner of East Lincoln Way and Howard Drive. We are going to be removing the existing playground that's there and replacing it with an all abilities playground. I feel like it's going to be a great addition to this already well-used area and park. Ultimately, the Pawara, Pawara Park has, also has a all abilities playground that has been extremely successful, and I feel this one's going to be just as successful, if not more successful. It includes the installation of the playground equipment, the installation of several shade structures, and modification of concrete pathways, along with a new rubber tile system that is needed to accommodate the ADA, ADA accessibility into the playground, along with the new decorative fence that, that goes around the perimeter of the playground. The other... I just wanted to show you kind of an overview of what that playground is going to generally look like. We've got, of course, swing sets, we've got a little, some play structures, and just a bunch of different fun things for the, the kids to play on. Even, I wouldn't mind going out there and checking it out. But just, just a lot of different things. These are just different perspectives, perspectives and views of the playground. This is looking back from the north to the south. There'll be some benches and some shaded areas, and a merry-go-round type thing. But just a lot of fun stuff for that playground and for the, the, everybody around the City of Spar, City of Sparks. I did want to highlight, of course, the, the funding that we received for this particular project that really helped to make this come to fruition. We did receive, as a couple of them spoke earlier, three different donations from several different foundations throughout the city. One of them being the Reno Rodeo, they donated $120,000. The Sparks Rotary Club donated $80,000, and the Osmond Foundation donated $10,000. I believe some of the representatives, of course, are here. If they want to stand up for anything, then we'd be just really happy to, to that, but appreciate it. Then, of course, we've got our, our Parks Fund 1402, the Capital Project Parks Fund that we, that you approved some funding in a couple of years back. And then, along with redevelopment area two, we've got funding coming out of that, that we will be coming forth to the Redevelopment Agency on August 23rd for final approval of, of that, that particular funding source. With that, I would, staff recommends council approve the Marina All Abilities Playground Construction Project in the amount of $841,707 to Garden Shop Nursery Landscaping Division. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Brian. Super excited. This is like such a dynamic project, and, and I didn't realize that the Pawara Park Playground, people come from all over the region, you know, and that's just not that far from where I live. And I didn't realize the draw from having that kind of facility in, in our region, not just City Sparks. So excited about the project. Two quick questions. What do we anticipate our total estimated cost on the, on the playground with, with everything? And then what is our timeline on construction start? And when will it be completed so we can have a celebration and grand opening?
So ultimately, between this agenda item for the construction portion, along with the playground equipment that'll be in the, the following agenda item that I'll present, about $1.1 million is the total cost of, of the whole entire project. And then timeline-wise, we do have that, that playground equipment takes eight to 12 weeks to come in, so we want to make sure that that's, that's in or close to being coming in before we actually start that project, along with, we've got a bunch of other projects going on within that same Marina area. So we're looking at after, after, after Labor Day, so it'll probably be somewhere in the September, October timeframe when we start construction on this one. But we have a lot of coordination that occurs between now and then.
Okay. An estimated completion and opening?
Probably around December.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Just wanted to thank a few people, so one, staff, for, for considering this project. Yeah, Pawara is awesome, and, and to see the kids utilizing that so, so frequently. I, I agree, the, the Sparks Marina, it really is, I believe, it may be in my ward, makes me think it more, but it's a gem of Sparks. And to be able to, to add to that, on that all abilities playground is awesome. And then I want to say a shout out to our community members, Reno Rodeo Foundation, Sparks Rotary, and the Osmond Foundation. Thank you very much for, for supporting this project and helping us put it together. Thank you.
Mr. Abbott?
Yeah, I think it's awesome that, you know, talking earlier, the selection committee that you guys use, we got engagement in the community, and we're not just picking these things that, just because we liked the colors or something. We're actually, the practical equipment, and maybe you guys attended, we did Kick for a Cause, where you saw kids that are, will be able to come down and benefit from this. So it's pretty awesome that both of these parks will be in Sparks and absolutely support it, and can't wait to share these photos with us and the people in the community, so they, so they know about it. So, good work.
Great, great, thank you. And, and yes, as Councilwoman Bybee spoke, we'll, we'll have some sort of ceremony or some sort of opening of the park, or, or once it's, once it's completed and it's ready to go.
Mr. Dare?
I saw in the photo a gate surrounding it. Is that a true addition to what's going to be there or not? I just, I said, I saw it on the, on the picture, there's no fence around it now of what we have.
There, there will be a fence around there, and that was basically from the consultant that we had when we were going through this whole selection process. Because of the, the all abilities that'll be there, there's some cases where the, the parents or whoever may need to keep, keep their, their children within that area so they don't go running off or whatever may happen. So it's just a, a little more security.
I, I think it's a good idea. I just wanted, I saw that there, and I wanted, it's one of the safety factors we can let parents know about. I think it's good. Thank you.
Pretty proud of my Rotary Club for stepping up in this whole deal, too. Thank you, Mike. And, you know, this truly isn't all abilities. I mean, it, it reaches a spectrum from disabilities physically to mentally, autism, the entire section, and we're pretty proud to have two of these in, in the City of Sparks. I'm not sure if that other city has, has any or not, but we got two. All right, so I'm looking, any other questions? I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson?
Move to approve construction contract AC 5789 with Garden Shop Nursery Landscaping Division Incorporated for the Marina All Abilities Playground Construction Project, bid number 2021020, PWP. What, what's that?
Hashtag.
Hashtag, thank you. WA 2021283, in the amount of $841,707.
Mr. Abbott?
I'll second the hashtag.
That was written by an engineer. Okay. Please vote. Any other discussion? Not, please vote? Okay. Go ahead. Motion carries unanimously, as I figured it would. Item nine point four, consideration discussion, possible approval to purchase play equipment from Big T Recreation for the Marina All Abilities Playground in the amount of $232,236.63. Mr. Kason?
Again, Brian Kason with City of Sparks, Capital Projects Manager. This is for the actual purchase of the play equipment, and, and it'll be purchased separately from the, the construction contract with Garden Shop Nursery installing this, this particular equipment. As Councilwoman Abbott spoke earlier, basically, this was chosen through a, a work group that was put together by, by a consultant named Let's Let Kids Play, that they do a lot of these type of parks throughout the nation. They helped us out with, with getting designs together, and we had the park staff, the engineering staff, our design consultant, along with special needs families that provided input on the design. We ultimately went through several, several different iterations, and they, they narrowed it down to three different options. We all voted on it. This particular option essentially was unanimously chosen through that, that process. We are using a joiner bid to purchase this equipment through the, through a Sourcewell purchasing contract. We do receive cost savings through this contract, because we're able to join into lar, join into larger contracts that have been purchased by other entities throughout the United States. This does allow us to, to purchase specific equipment for this particular project that fits what, what, what we need here, and then having a licensed contractor ultimately install the equipment, and that being Garden Shop Nursery. We, staff does recommend council approve the purchase of this playground, play equipment for the all abilities playground in the amount of $232,236.63. And I do, with Big T Recreation, I do want to note that we do have two other smaller pieces of equipment that will be purchased separately. They fall under the $50,000 minimum to come to council, and they will be for, one of them's for just over $9,800, and the other one's for $33,000, and they're for, they're shown in this depiction, but they're just specific pieces that, that had to be purchased separately outside of this, this particular contract.
Okay, questions from the council? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson?
I move to approve the purchase of play equipment from Big T Recreation for the Marina All Abilities Playground in the amount of $232,236.63.
Ms. Bybee?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks to the rodeo fast station and for the Sparks Rotary. Thank you. Thanks for hanging in with us. Okay. Nine point five. Consideration discussion, possible approval of employee complement changes with an estimated cost of $167,752.60 to the general fund, $9,073.20 to the Development Services Fund, $1,512.20 to the CDBG entitlement fund, and $4,385 to the Parks and Recreation Fund for the first year. Chris Valdez.
Mr. Mayor and City Council members, Jill Valdez, Human Resources Analyst Senior, for the record. It's a hard act to follow. We just talked about a wonderful park, but I have a series of complement changes across four departments to go over with you. The four departments are Community Services, Parks and Recreation, Fire, and Police. Starting with Community Services, they were recently reviewed for reorganization, part of which you've already approved in the budget. The remaining portion is here for consideration today. The budgeted city planner position removes planning duties from the Assistant Community Services Director role. Community Services is the largest department with the most authorized positions of any department in the complement. Being able to remove those duties allows for reorganization to be complete and to make that Assistant Community Services Director a Community Services Director, and restore a fully functioning director to the department. This will also allow the Assistant City Manager, John Martini, to fully devote his time to his role. Moving on to Parks and Recreation. Retirements in the past few years changed the structure of some of the reporting in Parks and Recreation. Because of that, staff recommends approving a reclassification of the Administrative Secretary position, which normally does not report to a department head, to an Administrative Assistant classification, which is the traditional role, reporting to a department head and providing all of the services to support his or her responsibilities. In the Fire Department, staff recommends a reclassification of a Fire Captain with a special assignment of Training Captain to a Fire Battalion Chief with a special assignment of Deputy Chief. The emergency medical service calls make up about 85% of calls for service in the Fire Department, and the oversight of the paramedic and the EMS program is currently performed by that Fire Captain, but the division chiefs have to have some input and decision-making authority. The, the two division chiefs currently have their own functional areas of responsibility. Reclassification would allow a single position to oversee this key program and to plan for current and future changes in the field.
Please.
I want to, I want to point out that this particular interest to the, to this Fire Department reclassification, that this move in recognizing additional management staff to oversee the emergency medical service program is also part of a larger plan that I'm working on in chief, we will see as we get into this.
This coming year's budget process later this fall, where we would also like to go to having a, a Fire Training Captain assigned to each division across Sparks Fire Department. Right now, we have the two Training Captains, and they are shared across the three battalions. So you will see a request for additional positions coming in the, in the budget process that we will start talking to you about later in this year. So I just kind of wanted to, wanted to paint that, that picture for, for you and for the, for the public that's watching today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
The fourth department is the Police Department, and starting on the sworn side, there is a request to reclassify a police officer and a police sergeant and make both of those positions police lieutenants. The first of these two lieutenants would be community-focused. They would oversee two key programs, the first of which is the Homeless Outreach Proactive Engagement, or HOPE Team. This is a three-officer group focusing on homeless outreach, proactive engagement. They make contact with the homeless, talk to them about affordable housing, shelter, clothing, food, and they work with local organizations and charities to connect homeless with resources. The goal of this team is to provide long-term solutions to the homeless, who are open to receiving that, and this work primarily happens down by the river. The other team that this lieutenant would oversee is the Mobile Outreach Safety Team, also called the MOST Team. This team moves beyond law enforcement response and adds mental health resources to those contacted by law enforcement. Council has already approved in the budget two mental health counselor positions. That, they would be part of this MOST Team, report to the lieutenant, and have a caseload of people who contact law enforcement but whose primary needs are mental health-related. Again, this team will connect people with community resources and services, thereby reducing law enforcement, calls for service, and getting people the help that they need. The second lieutenant would be in charge of some teams as well, the Regional Crime Suppression Unit and the Repeat Offender Program Unit. The second of those is a newly, is newly being housed at the Sparks Police Department. Reno and Wausau County are going to be sending staff to Sparks for that program. These teams and others like them are highly effective and important in the region, and assigning the lieutenant gives the oversight and the proper authority and the indication of importance and dedication that it needs to be successful. On the non-s sworn side, we have two, we have requests. First of all, to remove a crime analyst statistician position from the complement and replace it with a more professional level position called Criminal Intelligent Analyst. Why? Because as time progresses, this function needs to be performed by somebody with stats, with education and experience in statistics and in databases and database reporting. So changing the position will allow Spark- So changing the position will allow Sparks to recruit for the right qualifications and increase the effectiveness and the efficiency of using crime trends to deploy police resources where they can best serve our community. Second request on the non-sworn side is to reclassify a Police Office Assistant to a Police Record Supervisor. In the past few years, the Police Assistant Workforce at Sparks has increased by forty percent to allow Sparks Police Department to send non-sworn staff to take non-emergency calls in the field. This has been a successful transition, but now it's time to staff the supervisory group to be effective in managing and maintaining this important community function that the Police Assistants are performing. And finally, there's a request to reclassify a Vacant Property Evidence Technician Position to a Garage Liaison Position. Currently, a Police Officer and a Police Assistant share in these functions. By formalizing a position of Garage Liaison, it allows the department to recruit for someone with the work qualifications that suit this position, and it allows the Police Officer and Police Assistant to focus on their core responsibilities. Overall, the combined estimated costs are in bulk, mostly to the General Fund, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. Also, nine thousand, seventy-three dollars to the Development Services Fund, one thousand, five hundred, twelve dollars to the CDBG Entitlement Fund, and four thousand, three hundred, eighty-five dollars to the Parks and Rec Fund. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Okay. Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Dare.
Thank you. I move to approve the employee complement changes with an estimated cost of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty cents to the General Fund, nine thousand, seventy-three dollars and twenty cents to the Development Services Fund, one thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and twenty cents to the CDBG Entitlement Fund, and four thousand, three hundred, eighty-five dollars and zero cents to the Parks and Recreation Fund the first year.
Ms. Vanderwell.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Nine point six. Consideration, discussion and possible approval of an employment agreement AC 5792 with Armando Ornelas for the position of Community Services Director effective July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, with a yearly salary of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty cents plus benefits. Mr. Martini.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm John Martini, your Assistant City Manager for External Services, and I'm pleased to be here today to present the opportunity to consider, for you to consider this employment contract for the Community Services Director position. This contract will recognize the Community Services Director as a strategic partner and Department Head on the city's executive team. As council is aware, the Community Services Department is the city's largest and its operations have broad impacts on the way our citizens live, work, and play here in Sparks. Mr. Ornelas currently serves the department as its Assistant Director, and reclassifying this position to Director will recognize the strategic importance of the department to the city's long-term goals. And additionally, by doing so, it will free up some of my time so that I can focus on regional partnerships and the city's strategic planning. The employment agreement before you outlines the terms and the conditions for the position. The term of the agreement will begin on July nineteenth, so seven days from today, with an initial expiration date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Now, similar to language in our existing executive contracts, the agreement will automatically renew as a two-year agreement after the initial contract period. However, city manager recruits may limit the contract period to a single fiscal year. As Mayor Lawson said, the salary is one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty cents. That salary is within the pay range set forth in our city's class and compensation program. If you're curious, that's a, a Level Twenty-One position. The benefits provided under this contract for your review are commensurate with those in our existing executive contracts. In closing, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I believe appointing Mr. Ornelas is the, is a natural choice. Armando has served the city since nineteen ninety-nine. He's held the positions of Grants Administrator, Advanced Planning Manager, Redevelopment Manager, which we're now seeing the results in downtown Sparks some years later, and currently serves as the Assistant Community Services Director. I've worked personally with Armando since nineteen ninety-nine. We're actually hired on the same day. I know him to be a consummate professional who exudes honesty, transparency, and fairness and vision to everything he does. I am confident that the Community Services Department, you can see I'm, I'm related to Gino, the tears are starting, it's going to be hard, a little hard for me to step away from the day-to-day ops, but I know under his leadership, the department will be in great hands and will excel towards the goals that we set. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm available if you have any, oh, I'm sorry, staff is recommending approval, in case you couldn't tell. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Questions from the council? Mr. Dare.
Mine's not a question, I just want to make a comment. And since I've been in office this five years, when I first started, we've learned a lot from all of you, and Armando's been one that's done a great job of training some of us up in lingo and, and all the different things. I think this is very honoring. And actually, I think you mentioned that he's already pretty much doing the job, in my opinion, from what I've seen, and I think he would be a, a continued great thing. So, thank you for all you've done, sir, and appreciate you, and I would, I would suggest that we go for it on this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Dare.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Vanderwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it's my honor to do this because I have worked with Mr. Ornelas, and he is everything that Assistant City Manager Martini stated. So I move to approve the employment agreement AC dash five seven nine two with Armando Ornelas for the position of Community Services Director effective July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, with a yearly salary of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty cents plus benefits.
Mr. Anderson.
I will second the motion. Very good choice.
All right. Any further discussion?
One comment.
Go ahead, Ms. Bybee.
I'd just like to echo what everyone else is saying, and in my seven and a half years on the council, Mr. Ornelas has provided a lot of information and expertise, especially when I was first elected, so many things, planning being one of them, that I did not know. And so I always have trusted his judgment. He's really easy to work with in some not-so-easy situations sometimes, but I trust his judgment and his ability to guide us as we try to make decisions, especially when there are things that we're still learning about too. So I strongly support this, we'll be supporting this motion.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Armando. And that was probably the last time you're going to get all that public praise for a while. Now, now you got to go to work. Nine point seven. Consideration, discussion and possible approval of Resolution Number Three Three Eight Seven, Three Three Eight Seven, governing deputy police chief employees for the period of July one, twenty twenty-one through June thirty, twenty twenty-three, with an estimated cost to the general fund of twenty-three thousand, six hundred and three dollars in fiscal year twenty-two, and a range of twenty-eight, three eighty-three to thirty-seven, nine forty-three in fiscal year twenty-three. Ms. McCormick.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and City Council. For the record, I'm Allison McCormick, your Assistant City Manager for Management Services. And before you today, seeking approval of a proposed resolution governing salaries and benefits for our deputy police chiefs. This update to the Deputy Chiefs Resolution includes several key changes. First and foremost, a cost of living adjustment of three percent this year, and then a range between one and three percent based on Consumer Price Index or CPI for the second year of this resolution. Staff is also proposing to increase the Deputy Chief's tuition reimbursement from one thousand five hundred dollars to two thousand dollars. Their deferred compensation matching from fifty dollars a pay period to a hundred and twenty-five dollars a pay period. Their longevity maximum from six thousand dollars to seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. And staff is also proposing to add language regarding use of leave in a health emergency. The council may recall that at our last meeting, we talked a little bit about this same language being added to the Management Professional and Technical Employees Resolution. This language memorializes what we did over the past year-plus when folks were exposed to COVID-19. If they were exposed at work, we would place them on paid administrative leave for the isolation or quarantine period, and if they were exposed on their own time, they needed to use their own leave to receive pay during that isolation or quarantine period. So again, this, this language, and I'll say this a couple more times today, would memorialize what we did for the last several months. Also recognizing some of the pandemic effects on folks, staff is proposing to increase the maximum accrual of annual leave for deputy police chiefs from five hundred hours to five hundred and sixty hours, since people couldn't really go on vacation anywhere for quite a while. We're also proposing to add language that would allow employees to use annual or other types of leave for sick leave reasons. If someone has, you know, a series of, of unfortunate events happen in their lives and they run out of sick leave but still, still need that leave time. Finally, we are also proposing to update sick leave conversion and cash-out options. Employees would begin to be eligible to cash out sick leave upon retirement or convert it to health insurance premiums after fifteen years of city service and beginning at fifty percent of the value of that sick leave, increasing over additional years of service up to a hundred percent at twenty-five years or more. Staff is also proposing to allow employees to convert sick leave to deferred compensation at fifteen years of pers service to be distinguished from city service rather than twenty years, which is in the, the current resolution. But we're also proposing to increase the minimum amount of sick leave hours that an employee must have in their bank after that conversion from four hundred and eighty hours to eight hundred and thirty, to ensure that employees do have adequate sick leave in case of, again, a series of unfortunate events in their lives. Staff does recommend approval of Resolution Thirty-three Eight Seven, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Rabbit.
I moved, excuse me, I move to approve Resolution Number Three Three Eight Seven, governing deputy police chief employees for the period July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, with an est, with an estimated cost to the general fund of twenty-three thousand, six hundred and three dollars, zero cents in FY twenty, twenty-two, in a range of twenty-eight thousand, three eighty-three dollars to thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and zero cents in FY twenty-three.
Okay, Ms. Bybee.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. You're going to stand for the next one too, Alison?
The next handful.
Okay. Consideration, discussion and possible approval of Resolution Number Three Three Eight Six, governing Assistant Senior and Chief Assistant City Attorneys for the period July one, twenty twenty-one through June thirty, twenty twenty-four, with an estimated total cost to the general fund of forty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars in FY twenty-two, fifty-two thousand, two forty-four to seventy-two thousand, oh sixty-four in twenty-three, and sixty-five thousand, oh sixty-two to one oh two, four oh eight in FY twenty-four.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson and members of the City Council. Again, for the record, I'm Allison McCormick, your Assistant City Manager. I'm seeking the council's approval of Resolution Thirty-three Eight Six, governing salaries and benefits for our attorneys. If approved, this update to the attorney's resolution would make the following changes to attorney's salaries and benefits. A three percent cost of living adjustment this year, and then a range between one and three percent for the next two fiscal years. A lot of this will sound familiar. Staff is proposing to increase bilingual pay from fifty dollars a pay period to a hundred dollars a pay period. Staff is also proposing to provide deferred compensation matching. You may recall from the last meeting, the Management Professional and Technical Employees Group did not have deferred compensation matching, and the attorneys don't right now either. So this resolution, if approved, would add it as one of their benefits. Staff is also proposing to increase the longevity maximum from three thousand dollars to three thousand, five hundred dollars. And then, again, staff is proposing to add that language regarding using leave in a health emergency in anticipation of perhaps a, a future pandemic or a resurgence of COVID-19. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Thirty-three Eight Six, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Questions from the council? Mr. Dare.
I'm just looking at your numbers there, and they seem to jump pretty heavy on the third one. Can you, I just want to make sure it's, and explain why. Because if it's one to three percent, and the last one looks like it goes up almost forty, like there's a bigger range.
I am not sure.
Isn't that, does that seem, just looks a little odd.
Yeah, no, I, I, I see what you're seeing. Yes, please.
Thank you. And I do understand the percentage, you said one to three percent, so if that's what it is, but go ahead.
It is. Jeff Kronk, Finance Director, or for the, for the record, that is the, that is the result. I mean, at the end of the day, it's a, you know, one, it's a range at the, with the COLA could possibly be in that out year, and that's the biggest piece of it. And that's true, actually, for, if I could just kind of elaborate a little bit, it's true with, with a lot of these, a lot of these, when we're, when we're presenting a range, it could be a, a host of different things, whether it's merits that are involved or a range, a COLA, or, or say like a, a deferred comp match. We're not sure, you know, how many people are going to take advantage of that match, those kinds of things. But the, the big piece of this is the, is the COLA percentage.
That's accurate.
Yes.
Mr. Rabbit?
Go ahead, sir.
I think if you look, Christopher, under the PDF, it'll, it'll break it down, and it'll show you that those are prior years that are just added up into it. That's what you're saying, it just, it looks like an ugly number, but to get to that one or two, it's the previous two years.
That's the cumulative effect.
Is that large number?
Yes.
That one or two.
Yeah, the, there's a cumulative effect in all of these, from, when we're, when we're projecting out one, two, three years, however long the contract is, there'll be a cumulative effect. But the range, my comments still stand as far as the range, as far as what's driving those ranges. Yeah.
Mr. Adams.
And I might add that probably the first time in close to a decade, we're actually bringing on another attorney, and that attorney's salary, I'm sure, will have an impact on this as well, so.
Okay.
Good, good legal advice, it ain't cheap these days, huh?
Use it often. All right. Any other questions from the council? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Vanderwell.
I move to approve Resolution Number Three Three Eight Six, governing Assistant Senior and Chief Assistant City Attorneys for the period July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, with an estimated total cost to the general fund of forty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars in FY twenty-two, fifty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars to seventy-two thousand, sixty-four dollars in FY twenty-three, and sixty-five thousand, sixty-two dollars to a hundred and two thousand, four hundred and eight dollars in FY twenty-four.
Ms. Bybee.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on, public hearings and items unrelated, planning and zoning. Ten point one, public hearing, discussion and possible approval of an agreement AC Five Seven Nine One between the City of Sparks and the Sparks Police Supervisory Protective Association Sergeants for the period of July one, twenty twenty-one through June thirty, twenty twenty-three, with an estimated cost of two hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars in FY twenty-two, in a range of three twelve, nine eighty-six to three hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and forty-five in fiscal year twenty-three. Allison, again.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson and members of the City Council. For the record, I am still Allison McCormick, your Assistant City Manager. And I'm seeking City Council's approval of a collective bargaining agreement with the Sparks Police Supervisory Protective Association Sergeants Group. And... And with your leave, Mayor Lawson, I'd like to present this item and the next item together. The next item is an agreement with the police lieutenants. Separate public hearings and motions are required for each agreement. Both agreements cover two fiscal years, a cost of living adjustment of three percent in fiscal year twenty-two and that same range that I've said before, one to three percent based on CPI in fiscal twenty-three is what the negotiating teams reached. Staff is also proposing to add a two and a half percent addition to the top of the pay range for both sergeants and lieutenants. Looking at how they are paid, sergeants and lieutenants each only had five percent between the bottom of their range and the top of their range. So once someone passed probation after that promotion, they had no room for a merit increase after that. So staff is proposing to add another two and a half percent on the top of the range to to give them something to work toward after passing probation. Staff is also proposing to increase the longevity pay maximum from six thousand dollars to seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. That will sound familiar from the deputy chief's resolution. Staff is also proposing to increase the annual leave cash out maximum from forty hours a year to eighty, so a person could cash out up to two weeks' worth of of annual leave each year. Staff also proposes to increase the tuition reimbursement to one thousand, five hundred dollars for sergeants and two thousand dollars for lieutenants. Similarly, staff is proposing to increase the deferred compensation matching from fifty dollars a pay period for each group to a hundred dollars for sergeants and a hundred twenty-five dollars for lieutenants. Similar to the deputy chief's resolution, staff also proposes to update sick leave conversion and cash out options, again, starting at fifteen years of city service and fifty percent of the value of that sick leave and working upward to a hundred percent at twenty-five years of city service. Similarly, staff is proposing to allow employees in these groups to convert sick leave to deferred compensation at fifteen years of per service rather than twenty, and again, increasing that minimum sick leave bank up to eight hundred thirty hours to make sure that employees have enough sick leave available if they need it. Similar to the deputy chief's resolution, staff also has proposed language that would allow employees to use annual or other leave types for sick leave reasons if they exhaust their sick leave. One thing that was in both the sergeants and lieutenants contracts that we agreed between the negotiating teams to eliminate from this contract was an award of extra personal days for those employees who don't use sick leave in a year. If the pandemic taught us anything, it's that we want people to stay home when they are sick. So we are removing that kind of perverse incentive to do otherwise. Similarly, we're proposing to eliminate compensatory time accrual for time spent by employees preparing for briefings. Federal law requires that employees who are paid hourly, which is sergeants and lieutenants, get paid for the hours they work instead of just accruing accruing that time. So we're cleaning that language up. Similar to the deputy chief's and the attorney's resolution, we are proposing to add that language regarding using leave in a health emergency. We were pleased to reach an agreement with the the two negotiating teams on that front. In the sergeant's agreement only, we also have agreed to add honor guard and the HOPE team, the homeless outreach proactive engagement, to the list of special assignments that receive a hundred dollars a pay period in extra pay. So that that concludes the the terms of the agreements. But before I wrap up, I I just have to thank the negotiating teams for the city. Mindy Falk, Wayne Weber, and Jill Valdez were hugely helpful, would not have gotten through this process without them. But I also want to thank Lieutenant John Patton and Sergeants Danny James, Sean Condon, and Ben Russell, who were representing the association. We had some frank and open conversations about what their priorities were and what their goals were. And that brought us to agreements that I'm I'm proud to present to you today. Staff does recommend approval of both agreements. Again, each requires a separate public hearing and a separate motion, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Okay, if not, then we're going to open this as a public hearing. Anyone in the public wishing to speak at this time on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais, and I am looking for a motion on ten point one. Mr. Dare.
I move to approve the agreement AC five-seven-nine-one between the City of Sparks and the Sparks Police Supervisory Protective Association sergeants for the period of July first, twenty-twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three with an estimated cost of two hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred, five hundred and fifty-five dollars in FY twenty-two and a range of three hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars to three hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and forty-five in FY twenty-three.
Mr. Anderson?
I will second Mr. Dare's motion.
Okay, do you have any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And motion carries unanimously. All right, ten point two, public hearing, consideration of possible approval of an agreement AC five-seven-nine-zero between the City of Sparks and the Sparks Police Supervisory Protective Association lieutenants for the period of July one, twenty-twenty-one through June thirty, twenty-twenty-three with an estimated cost to the city of a hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-six in FY twenty-two and a cost between a hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and ten and a hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight fifty-two in fiscal year twenty-three. And you've given your presentation, any questions from the council? Okay, this is a public hearing, we're going to open to the public for comment. Anyone in the public wishing to speak at this time on this item? Okay, we'll bring it back to the dais, and I'm looking for.
I had one comment, sir.
Nope, your time passed.
I pushed the button. His name was here.
Look at that, go ahead, Mr. Dare.
Technology believes this. No, I I, and I know I speak for all of us, but since I've been on this council and I've watched, we have all very much stood with our first responders. And I just want to thank our police for what an incredible season. I mean, even going through COVID, all of our first responders have always stepped up and jumped in there, and so just supporting supporting them back is something that I think is crucial. And I think for City of Sparks, I hope this is a place that any first responder would rather work than anywhere else. And I know, again, I'm speaking for all of us, so I cheated and took everyone's words, but I think it needs to be said and not just an approval. Thanks.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion? Can I get it? I'm confused.
You didn't get one yet.
Looking for a motion.
About to.
Uh, Ms., Mr. Anderson?
Move to approve agreement AC five-seven-nine-zero between the City of Sparks and the Sparks Police, geez, Sparks Police Supervisory Protective Association lieutenants for the period July first, twenty-twenty-one to June thirtieth, third, uh, twenty twenty-three with an estimated cost to the city of a hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars in fiscal year twenty-two and a range of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars to one hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars in FY twenty-three.
Okay, Ms. Vanderwell?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, planning and zoning, public hearings in action, item eleven point one. And I'm going to ask that the clerk reads this for me, please.
My pleasure, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
This is the second reading of Bill two-seven-eight-four in ordinance to amend the final approved plan for the Pioneer Meadows Plan Development to add self-storage to the list of permitted uses in the GC, general commercial land use category. The Pioneer Meadows Plan Development is generally located east of the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development, west of the Wingfield Springs Plan Development, and south of the Stone Brook Plan Development in Sparks, Nevada, on a site approximately six hundred and forty acres in size in the PD Plan Development Pioneer Meadows zoning district. PCN two-one dash zero 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 two forward slash PD two-one dash zero 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 three.
Okay, Doctor, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Jonathan Cummins, planner. I'm not seeing my presentation on the. I can hunt it down out of the drive if that's. There, we're good. Thank you, Lisa. You just had to say the word folder. All right, again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jonathan Cummins, planner. I'm here to present today a request for an amendment to the Pioneer Meadows Plan Development Handbook. Specifically, the request is for an amendment to add self-storage as a permitted use in the general commercial land use area. The six hundred and forty acre Pioneer Meadows Plan Development site is outlined in blue in this exhibit. As you know, it's just north of Vista Boulevard, and it starts to go eastward toward Golden Eagle Regional Park. The original approval of Pioneer Meadows Plan Development Handbook was in two thousand, it's since been amended four times. For a bit of added context on this part of the city, just to the east of Pioneer Meadows is the Wingfield Springs Plan Development. This is mostly single-family housing here, but down here along the general commercial area of Pioneer Meadows, which is the area we're thinking about today, is a vacant city parcel as well as a as a park, just to give you a little bit of that context. And then to the west of Pioneer Meadows is Kylie Ranch North Plan Developments. Much of this land here is still undeveloped, but a lot of single-family housing being developed currently. And same goes here in the north with the Stone Brook Plan Development, where there's a lot of single-family housing going in, but also a lot of undeveloped land still. So the thirty acre general commercial land use area inside of the Pioneer Meadows is a thirty acre site. There's a total of eleven parcels, twelve, excuse me, twelve acres of that thirty total is undeveloped amongst these four parcels here, three north of the Rayleys and one across Wingfield Hills Road here. And so, again, if you're familiar with this part of the part of the city, where Wingfield Hills Road crosses Vista Boulevard, this is the Rayley Shopping Center, and so the sites in question are in this shopping center. So to give a quick overview of what is being proposed as the change to the handbook, the applicant is proposing to add only one new use just to the general commercial land use area in Pioneer Meadows. And so here's the list as it currently exists today in the handbook. The uses that are currently allowed by right in general commercial include retail stores, personal service shops, comparison goods, wholesale stores, business park, recreational facilities, fitness centers, sales offices, public facilities, clinics, medical offices, general office, banks, restaurants, childcare facilities, assisted living facilities, and convenience stores. Again, these uses are all permitted by right currently in the handbook, meaning that review of a project would be at the staff level through an administrative review. So that today's request is to add self-storage accompanied by appropriate development standards to be added to this list. So for a bit more background on what is allowed in general commercial in the handbook, these are the uses that are allowed there through conditional use permit. Entertainment centers, bars, churches, drive-throughs, outdoor sales, gas and service stations, and outdoor storage accessory to retail sales. A few of these uses from these lists are relatively intense in terms of traffic generated, light and noise created. So, you know, just as a sort of big picture, retail, restaurants, convenience stores, bars, drive-throughs, gas stations, these are relatively intense uses that are currently allowed through different levels of review. So these bullet points are intended to give you a sense of what the rules are currently, in addition to what's being added in terms of development standards. The first two bullet points are a quick overview of the current review process. So any proposal for a project has to meet the the standards that are outlined in the handbook for commercial development. Very simply put, anything that's proposed to be developed in the general commercial area will have to look very compatible with the Rayleys that exist there currently. The design review committee of the Pioneer Meadows will continue to have first approval of a review request. So when a developer does design a site specifically, they have to come to the city with that approval from that DRC in order for the city to proceed with the development. So the next three bullet points are sort of an overview of what is being proposed to be added. Screening walls and landscaping are a really important part of the the design criteria here in order to mitigate whatever impacts might be possible between a commercial and a non-commercial or residential types of developments. In addition to the parking and circulation, it's also required. These are going to create essentially, you know, larger separation of uses between property line and and a building that eventually would get built. So that gives residents who live in nearby residential neighborhoods a little bit more of that sort of buffer between the residential neighborhood and the commercial use. And the last piece here, being added to the development standards, RV and vehicle storage is a common component of many storage facilities, as you know. Staff worked with the applicant in order to come up with a percentage. Nothing over twenty-five percent of the site could be used to store RVs and boats and things like that. And in addition, it's it's an important part of this list here because those the the screening and landscaping components become really important. If there's going to be a ten-foot tall RV, there needs to be a wall in landscaping in order to make sure that not everyone in the neighborhood has to see it. So, let me not go to the findings yet, sorry. To elaborate on the use itself a bit as well, as as in the municipal code, there are standards also that regulate the use. So we're not just talking about development standards, but it's important to point out that if you're going to rent a storage unit, it's only to be used for the storage of personal goods and personal belongings. So no ban practice, no fixing cars, no running a business out of it, things like that. So it's important to keep that language in those development standards so that it's really clear that staff has the appropriate tools to evaluate a request when it comes through to establish exactly how the business would function. So to make that as clear as humanly possible here, I think today it's important that we're pointing out that we're incorporating standards into this amendment that are going to regulate the use and also the development and the site criteria and the physical sort of appearance of a proposed building, of a proposed project eventually. So back again to the development component, any new commercial construction does require administrative review by staff. That's that's a meeting where planning, building, engineering, fire departments, and any other appropriate departments are present in order to evaluate a request and to then require any conditions that they see might be unnecessary in order to mitigate the impacts of, specifically when there's a commercial use going in somewhere near residential uses. So with that, I think it's worth reiterating before we take a jump into the findings here that we are. This is a request not for a specific project or a specific site design. This is a request to amend the handbook to allow the use. And so with that, we do have to get these following ten findings on the record. So I've grouped them up into three, so there's three slides of three before we get to the public comments findings, which is, you know, a little bit of of information that you want to know. So finding A does ask that we evaluate whether the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So by adding a permitted non-residential use to a growing part of a residential area in the city, staff and the planning commission have found that the the request does support goal MG one and goal MG two to foster diversity in the land use mix and support economic vitality. Finding B asks that you evaluate whether the request is consistent with surrounding land uses. The only sites available for this use in the Pioneer Meadows are adjacent to a grocery store as well as various other office, restaurant, gas station type of users. And so the request is not inconsistent with those surrounding land uses. Finding C asks that you evaluate whether the amendment is fiscally positive to the city. The applicant did provide a full fiscal impact analysis, did find that the that the proposed amendment would be fiscally positive to the city. One primary assumption of that study is is an important point as we kind of think about the the use itself. Self-storage is categorized in fiscal impact analyses as an industrial type of a use based on the nature of the buildings involved, based on the expected uses that would take place at the site. So again, in this case, we're talking about storage units that are accessed very infrequently and left alone for long periods of time by customers. And so with that in mind, the this particular type of development would be a relatively low cost to provide services by the city. Finding D asks that you evaluate whether the request is in the mutual interest of owners and preserve the plan's integrity. So the change would allow one new use in the remaining general commercial land use area. This would not increase the size or alter the shape or location of parcels that are designated general commercial and therefore not affect the integrity of the plan as originally approved. Finding E asks that you evaluate whether the request will impair reliance on provisions of the plan. Self-storage is a use that's not uncommon in commercial areas throughout the city and elsewhere. It would likely generate less traffic, less noise, less impacts overall than uses that are already permitted in the general commercial area. Therefore, the change is not expected to impair reliance on the handbook. Finding F asks that you evaluate whether the request would adversely affect the public interest. The request is intended to facilitate development of parcels that have remained vacant and undeveloped since the inception of the plan development twenty years ago. As such, the request is in a manner consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, and as such, not detrimental to the public interest. Finding G, this is the last group of three, we'll get to our public comment finding. Finding G asks that we evaluate whether the request is consistent with the development and preservation of the entire plan. So as you're aware, general retail has faced increasing challenges over the past decade or more due to online shopping and other factors. And based on the history of these long vacant parcels, those uses that were anticipated at the time of the original handbook are no longer conducive to development of the sites. So adding self-storage offers an option for development of sites, taking away the likelihood that they remain undeveloped indefinitely. that they remain undeveloped indefinitely. Finding H asks that you evaluate whether the requests affect the enjoyment of adjacent lands. No changes to the land use pattern or street network are proposed, and so the proposal would have no impact on anyone's ability to utilize the lands adjacent to Pioneer Meadows. Again, this, as it relates to this particular finding, the road and pedestrian networks would remain unchanged by this request. Finding I requires that the amendment not be granted solely to confer private benefit to any person. The proposed amendment would allow any property owner to pursue self-storage facility in a general commercial parcel in Pioneer Meadows, therefore not intended to confer private benefit to any particular person. Finding J requires public notice be given. Staff did publish notice in the newspaper on April 21st prior to the planning commission public hearing. In addition, anyone who lived or owned property, excuse me, within 750 feet of the Pioneer Meadows, including every property owner within Pioneer Meadows, was noticed by mail April 22nd. That included 1,265 property owners. Staff did receive 25 emails prior to the planning commission hearing. 24 of those were opposed to the request. One email contained what appeared to be approximately 100 signatures of residents opposed to the request. At planning commission, nine callers requested to speak. Seven of those were opposed to the request. Additionally, the posting of agendas, including the notice of the first reading of this item, were published in the Reno Gazette Journal on July 1st, also notifying the public of today's public hearing. The planning commission's recommendation was to approve with the caveat that self-storage be permitted in the handbook through a conditional use permit process. So the request is to add self-storage with the appropriate design criteria, development standards, to the permitted uses table. The planning commission believed that additional review and public noticing and a public hearing would be appropriate based on their analysis of the public comment prior to their meeting, as well as their subsequent interpretation of the findings based on that public comment. So based on that recommendation, staff is presenting four alternatives for your consideration today. The first alternative being to adopt the ordinance as recommended by the planning commission. That was, again, to require that there be a conditional use permit process for a self-storage facility. Alternative number two would be to adopt the ordinance as recommended by staff to the planning commission. Again, that was to allow the use with its development standards to be allowed as a permitted by right use in general commercial. Alternative number three would be to deny the request, and alternative number four would be to remand it back to the planning commission with direction. So with that, the applicant's representative is also here today, I believe, to make a presentation as well, but I will be glad to take your questions.
Okay. Questions from the council? Want to hear from the applicant first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Andy Drilling with Wood Rogers, representing the applicant, Tom Nguyen, who's with me today as well to provide some remarks. Just, a little, this is going to be reiterating what staff already did, but this is a very narrowly scoped request to amend the Pioneer Meadows handbook to allow self-storage as a permitted use only in the general commercial district. Just by way of background, Pioneer Marketplace, the shopping center out there, began construction in 2007. The entire center was constructed with parking lots, utilities, and several of the finished pads left for future buildings. Unfortunately, after 15 years of operation, most of those vacant pads have not been filled in due to lack of demand, and they still remain vacant today. Pioneer Meadows was established originally, as staff said, 20 years ago, back in, over 20 years ago now, back in 2000. The retail market has changed considerably since then. Brick and mortar retailers that were anticipated in this location, thinking kind of, you know, junior boxes, as we would say. So your a little bit larger retail establishments, Marshalls, Borders Books, things like that, a lot of those have either downsized considerably with the introduction of e-commerce or have gone out of business entirely. And those that are still around want to be in real Class A locations, really out on Pyramid Highway where they're getting a higher level of pass-by traffic that this site doesn't afford them. Your staff was incredibly professional in working through a number of our questions and concerns about trying to find alternatives for this site in order to introduce new uses, in order to fill in these vacant pads that have been there for the last 15 years. We worked with them and ultimately came to the request that's before you today. We did have, as I said, a narrow scope to it. We limited the amount of storage to 93,000 square feet, so it wouldn't be all of the available acreage out there. We required that the same architectural standards that are required of the existing commercial buildings would be identical effectively for the storage buildings. Lighting would remain the same, hours of operation would remain the same. We offered 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, which is currently what Rayleigh's operates at. The setbacks are the same as the commercial buildings, including a one-to-one setback along the western boundary next to residential. And we anticipate that these western pads, even though storage could be introduced, there's still a number of pads that could still be built out with restaurants and other retail and office uses. As shown on the exhibit here, the green would be the storage buildings, the blue would be actually future buildings that would be built on still vacant pads out there. Some kind of confusion, this is not something we're anticipating to be kind of your run-of-the-mill mini-storage where you see, you know, the roll-up doors on the outside. We actually prohibited those from facing, you know, being visible. We are looking at, you know, we've conducted a market study, shows a strong demand in the city of Sparks, especially in this area. And so we're looking at what we would consider a Class A indoor facility, two to three buildings. All of the units would be interior, you'd have common point of access, they'd be climate-controlled, security cameras throughout, professionally managed, and then you would have that security feature where you have to key in both to enter and exit the facility. We did conduct public outreach. We had a hosted neighborhood meeting that we hosted subsequent to, or I'm sorry, after the planning commission meeting, we actually also had a meeting with the Pioneer Meadows Homeowners Association Board. And with this slide, really, we want to identify is kind of the common concerns that we heard from the public. One, that it would be an unsightly facility, and what we're doing to address that, the existing shopping center has obviously a number of guidelines that are in the Pioneer Meadows handbook. We would have to maintain those same standards for the storage facility and also have the design review committee's approval. Hours of operation were a concern, those were mainly the same as the rest of the shopping center. Traffic was an interesting one, there was a concern that there'd be increased traffic here, which quite frankly is just not true. The shopping center, if we looked at the hypothetical of 93,000 square feet of additional shopping center here, that would produce about 3,500 or just over 3,500 trips. That same size of storage unit produces only 140 daily trips. So it's considerably less traffic actually with the introduction of this storage facility. The security, currently it's an open access, there are security cameras around the shopping center. With the facility being built, there would be closed access, obviously to the building, but also some of the outdoor areas around the building would be gated off and would still have security cameras. Lighting would remain the same, there's no light spill over the property lines, especially the residential property lines. Actually, the light standards that are out there would remain, and then any, building lighting would have to be downlit and really just be for security purposes. And really, and the last thing we heard is there's not a need for more storage. Like I said, we conducted a market study that showed that 98% of the existing units in the city of Sparks are currently occupied, and you're seeing kind of the result of that is really increased rates for those storage facilities. And so there is definitely a need and a need for it in this specific location, given the type of residential that's surrounding it. We did conduct a fiscal impact, the results of that were positive. And with that, I'd turn it over to Tom for his perspective.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Tom, finish your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom Nguyen.
Thank you.
I've owned the center since 2007, as Andy said, since the inception. We actually built this center at the very early phases, R&amp;D Meadows. Built both sides of the street, here on this area that shows both the east and the west side. And we wanted to put this area up because frankly, we have a problem, and we're looking for help, we're looking for help from you. The problem is the blue areas. Before I get to that, just so everybody's oriented, the white building is Rayleigh's, the, there's buildings along Vista and along Wingfield on both sides of the street. We do have yellow vacancy, those are our problems, you have some, that's typical. We have one significant problem there, which I won't get into, but the blue is really unusual. For a 15-year-old center to have 107,000 square feet of undeveloped retail means there's a problem. And, you know, I think it may confuse, be confusing, maybe people think it's a recession problem or a connecting road problem, by the way. Kudos to you on getting that done, that was wonderful. Or a pandemic problem. And 15 years have gone by, those are not the problems. Problems are a major structural change in the way people shop. And these large buildings that run kind of north-northwest were intended for these uses that you see on the next slide. Borders, Sports Authority, Toys R' Us, Circuit City, every one of those companies is out of business today. They haven't all gone out of business, but most of these kinds of stores are gone because Amazon, online shopping. At Walmart, I think Walmart's online shopping increased 50% last year, just as an example of one non-Amazon user. So those pads are really challenged for us, and unless we find something to do, we have a center that looks like we have land forever, which creates no urgency and doesn't allow us to start continuing to build. This slide was put together by our realtors. I think we have the best team in town, the CB Group, and I won't get into all of the details about it, but one in three of the different retailers that we were looking for when we built this center, one in three are in existence today, the other two are out of business. And so it's a sea change to, you know, what we're seeing across the country. I think you've seen it in malls, you've seen it in other places, and we're experiencing it here, and so we need to do something. One other thing I should say about our real estate group, that slide showed a bunch of retail sites, we've been talking about retail. Years ago, we said, look, it doesn't have to be retail. If it fits within the handbook, if it's a compatible use, office, large medical building, anything, we'll take it. You know, we want to see something happen out here. In 15 years, we have had zero offers on these sites. So what we have here is what we think is the solution. The green represents the self-storage. And what I really want to point out on here is if the self-storage is built, it's in the back, it's away from the rest of the site, the best retail pads, the best walkable retail remain in the blue along the major road. There's still 54,000 feet of retail to build after the self-storage would build. Add in the vacancies we have, and it's 81,000 square feet. That's enough for a full shopping center. And I know there are some folks, it's really easy to get confused by all of this, and it's very easy to get confused by what we're talking about until you see the magnitude of the empty site out here. But 80,000 feet at a typical 2,000-square-foot restaurant or shop, that would lead to 40 more restaurants and shops. We have retail out here that will serve the community needs for decades to come. And so while some folks, and I think, I think it's just hard to understand, I think while some are concerned that the self-storage takes away future retail opportunities, you know, we've got a lot, we've got a long way to go here still. And so with that, thank you for your attention to this matter and allowing us to address you.
Okay. Questions from the council?
Got a question.
Go ahead.
I have a couple, and I guess I'll start with you, and then we can bring staff back. Okay. Do you have any, I know this is just for the handbook change today. Do you, it's not for what the project will look like, although it does have to comply with the restrictions already on the whole shopping center, architecture, lighting, all of that has to fall underneath the design standards that are already in place. Do you have any renderings or photos of what you envision? I know that's not what we're approving today.
Right.
But to kind of get, because a lot of the complaints I'm getting are people who are envisioning, you know, your old, old mini-storage that have been in our community and in the country forever. So I want, you know, that would help me a little bit, and maybe people looking to see what possible renderings, understanding this isn't what we're approving today.
Yes, we had our architect work in the last few weeks, just some concept renderings, because we heard a lot of issues from folks, and we wanted to just start to take a look at what it might look like. And so this is, I wouldn't say this is super professional, but it'll give you some idea. This, you see the two large buildings that are shown there? The rendering below it, that we had to move right there, would show you what those buildings would look like from a distance. Single-story, all self-contained, no roll-up doors, very similar architecture with details and materials similar to what's in the shopping center itself, which is what we want to do. I mean, we own the shopping center, we want this to be compatible with it. And so we think it'll be very, you know, very attractive-looking self-storage facility. The other thing we wanted to do, councilwoman, is to take a look at what it might look like from the road, where most people would see it. And so this was, this is a real rough sketch, but again, you can see up at the very top, they're showing some white buildings, Andy can point to those. So those are the shops that we still have along the road. And then if you look at the bottom, the white buildings are showing up that you would see from the road as you were driving or walking by. The colored that you see in the rear is a self-storage facility. So for all intents and purposes, it's not going to be particularly visible. It's in the back, this is a big site, it's a big shopping center when you go back, you go back to those back pads. So we think, we think it's great. What we really like about it is we think it's going to energize the street and the commercial on the street, which I think that's what people want. People are looking for more services, more restaurants.
Thank you, I appreciate, appreciate seeing those renderings, especially from the street view there. So if there's not roll-up doors, how are the, what is on the front of each storage unit? I know they're individual access, but how, what kind of doors, and are those facing inward instead of outward? Is that the difference?
Yeah, so most of the newer Class A self-storage facilities have a kiosk in the building. This will probably have a couple kiosks on either side. You enter a pad, a PIN number that you're given. That PIN number is, identifies who you are, it's all electronically monitored to the office. That allows you access into the facility. You go down these hallways, and there are roll-up doors in the hallways, in a climate-controlled facility. You have your own individual lock and own individual alarm on each facility. And then when you want to leave the facility, you have to enter your PIN once again. So it identifies who went in, how long they were in there, and when they left. And so from a standpoint of people staying for a long time, you know immediately if something like that is going on.
So it's indoor access for, if I was driving my car in loaded with things to be stored, it's an interior access to each unit?
Yeah, there are large carts in the kiosk areas where you take and unload your car onto these carts, and they're wider than this table, maybe two-thirds the length of this, and then you roll the carts down these super-wide hallways to your unit.
Okay. And then there was some mention of RV and vehicle storage, maybe on the outside sections are open? You're looking at open, that interior storage for RV?
That's correct.
And vehicle?
Yeah, so Andy Drilling, for the record, effectively, we would be looking at kind of the existing parking area that surrounds those pads currently. So the idea here is really to use the existing infrastructure that's out there. We've got paved parking lots and paved drive-aisles and things like that, so it would be kind of filling in in between those and utilizing a very small amount for some outdoor RV and boat storage.
Okay, and those would be subject to design standards as far as height. Mr. Cummings mentioned about, you know, the height of an RV and what kind of screening or, you know, especially on the residential side there, that would be, have to be compliant with those standards.
Correct.
Okay. And then just one more question. On the project itself, do you anticipate any other uses of the building besides the actual storage? Did you have other offices or things you were looking at utilizing, possibly utilizing the facility for, in addition to the mini-storage?
We do, actually. Our market study indicates a need for executive office suites, and we would And we would have a manager here at the self-storage facility during work hours. And if you've been to more modern self-storage facilities, they have a lot of packing supplies and boxes and things like that for people who are moving. But what we wanted to do is incorporate into that area an executive office complex, so that the manager could also be the manager of that executive office complex, where a lot of the business tools and equipment that folks might need to use would have access to. We think there's a need for it. It's not going to be real big. You know, we're probably talking about, the market study showed maybe a dozen offices. We'd have conference rooms and a few other things. But it's really the people that live in the area who are, you know, and the pandemic's changed things. But, you know, I know the city's not necessarily running at full capacity with everybody, everybody back there. So folks that want to live, work nearby, to do the work for wherever they go to work, but to have an office away from the home or away from the kids or away from whatever distractions there are, we think there's a need for that. So our plan is to include that kind of use incorporated into the storage facility.
Okay, into one of the buildings then?
Yeah, it would probably be the front building, and it would be closest to the street. I don't know if you want to point it out there, Andy?
Yeah, it could be on, we were anticipating maybe on this pad here.
Or on the other side.
Yeah.
Or right in there.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have at this time.
Mr. Anderson?
Couple of questions. Councilman Bybee asked about the RV storage parking. So I see some like slotted images there. Is that actually where the RV parking would be, is backed up right there?
Yes, effectively, it would just, like I said, utilize some of the existing parking that's back there. This is all constructed. There's existing parking there, and so it would be to utilize, you know, some of those spaces for smaller RVs and boats.
And I apologize, I don't recall seeing this in all the documents. What size wall will be along that backside right there?
So there's an existing six-foot wall with now mature evergreen trees. And so our anticipation is we'd work with staff to see where we need to fill in some of those evergreen trees. But I don't think, the screen standard is there's already a wall there.
And then the other question is, as far as the traffic pattern currently, the traffic pattern, if it remains retail and that develops out, and then comparing that to what it's going to be. And again, you touched on it with Councilwoman Bybee's question, but if you can just help me understand the traffic pattern as a storage unit?
So right now, macro level for the shopping center, I mean, the traffic pattern, this is the primary access to the shopping center off of the roundabout. This is kind of a secondary access up here. So we would anticipate that this then, there's left in, left out at this intersection already. So that would become the primary access probably into the storage facility. This also is used by the Rayleigh's shopping, or Rayleigh's building as their truck access. So their currently truck access comes around the back of the building, and that's how they access. We would then work with them to relocate that to this location. So effectively, we'd be taking truck traffic away from that residential shared property line, which could be a benefit. But that overall circulation kind of modifies slightly. So as Tom was saying, you know, the offices would be up front, the management office up front. And then these are really kind of self-sustained, you know, single points of access into each building. So there'd be a loading zone where you would pull up and unload your vehicle onto a cart, and then push that, your personal belongings into the building through probably sliding doors that would open for you.
Okay. And again, then technically, the RV parking would be even between the, any vehicle traffic and the residents?
Correct, yeah. So we would anticipate probably a fence somewhere along here, as well as off this corner of the building. So this would all be fenced in and secured for any outdoor vehicle storage. Thank you. You bet.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Dare?
For me, this is going to come down to, part of it is your, is our community. You know, we've met, and I appreciate your time, and I think you met with, you know, that's exactly what you're supposed to do. And I appreciate getting to see all this. You know, my concerns do come down to the people who live right around there and agreement that was, I know it's 2007. I do have one huge thought, though, with what were happening in Sparks. Things have changed, but one of the things that has changed is Sparks has run out of land greatly. And as we look at this, I don't know, I appreciate that in your studies, it is believed that there's need for this. But there's going to be a need for a whole lot of things coming really quick with no land. And so the fact that you have this could be quite a gem. I mean, I say that not trying to tell you to do your job. You have your own life that you got to figure out. For me, this is at the tip of my ward that comes back in there. But my constituents is where I find myself very concerned, and we're going to hear from some of them. But I just, as I consider potentially what could happen with this land and what could happen in that region and for our community, that is one of the questions that goes through my mind. I don't think it surprises you. We've talked about some of these things. So, and so that's, it's my concern, my thoughts. And I don't know, I don't know if you have any thoughts towards, if this did not pass, what would you do with this land?
Well, I think if it didn't pass, we would be back here, probably without asking for a small change within an allowable zone, but a much bigger change. You know, it is a neighborhood shopping center. It's been designed that way. It's a great place for multi-family site. You know, my guess is that would be a lot more controversial. And what we looked at is, what do we have here? What works? How can we fit within a shopping center? How can we work with the architecture, and how can we make the rest of the retail sink and do well? And so I, you know, I understand your comments about running out of land, but when you look at the limited uses in the handbook for this property, it really comes down to large-box retail. When you look at it, it's very difficult to fill it other way. And you can't, in the retail business, the other thing that's very important is when you sign a lease with somebody, Rayleigh's, for example, you cannot do another grocery store. Starbucks, no more coffee shops. Pizza Place, that's it. So when you start to talk about, I mean, we'd have eighty thousand square feet left to fill after the self-storage, and you start to think about how many small shops there are for that. You know, I think we're going to see a lot of medical. We have across the street, on the east side, we have a wonderful twenty-five-thousand-foot pad that would be a great medical building. It was right across, right across from the assisted living facility. We've talked to them, said, do you have any room for expansion, because that's an allowable use? And they said, no. They've got memory care already, they've got assisted living. Maybe someday there'll be more needs for that. But I think, I think for the big boxes in the back, that big area, the ship sailed with online sales. And honestly, I don't know what else we would do. I really don't.
I agree, and I appreciate your sincerity. I mean, truly, as we look at this, I mean, our job, this is where it's hard for me and my brain is. I'm one that I always think people who are willing to invest in our community are applauded. I appreciate that, but also we have a community of human beings that we represent and look to too. So just as we continue to listen, I just, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ivy.
Just a quick follow-up. I'm trying to look at all my notes here. And I'm showing on your undeveloped pads, toward the blue pads on that map, a hundred and seven thousand square feet. Does that sound right? Of undeveloped, you've got undeveloped pads, and then you have vacancies. So you have current businesses on both sides of the street. The yellow would be vacancies. The vacant retail, twenty-six thousand currently, and a hundred and seven thousand feet, square feet of undeveloped, all those, the pads that are there and ready for a restaurant, another shop, Trader Joe's.
You've got that right.
That kind of, but you also have, so you also have the one major vacancy of the CVS store, which was only open for a day, and now that's empty. So there's a lot, I guess my point is there is a lot of available square footage for a lot of different businesses that are not there now. This mini storage would not be taking all the space that's available for you to still develop. And is your plan, if the mini storage is approved, and obviously you don't have a crystal ball in the economy, and right now we're dealing not only coming through pandemic, but we can't find anybody to work. So that creates a whole nother complex problem for businesses of trying to open a new business if you can't get employees to work. So hopefully, we'll be through that hurdle soon. But your hope and plans as developer is to obviously fill the vacant spots and develop the other ones is what your ultimate goal is, because obviously you don't want them empty either.
Yeah, that's, you're, the way you read the numbers is exactly correct. Our focus right now has been very much on the yellow. And, you know, honestly, we had to deal with, we heard from the fitness owner, you know, we did what we needed to do with our tenants. It was been a very difficult year for them, but it wasn't a structural problem, I hope. And, you know, it's a year we all got through. I have, we have high hopes for these small spots. We do have activity. We have a pet, a pet store, or I'm sorry, veterinarian office going in. We just opened a dental office on the east side. The big issue really is that CVS store. And they built, when they built that, it was a ground lease to them. They built the store. They bought Long's right at the same time, and then they said, hey, we're consolidating. We're keeping our Long's store, and the lease required them to open for a day, so they opened for a day. I don't know what their sales were. And they took everything out and have been empty for fifteen years. Now, we continue to work on that. I, you know, I think it would make a great hardware store, an ace hardware store. So that's one of the tenants we've been trying to seek, and I think that would be very popular with the neighbors. So it's going to fill up, and we're going to keep working on that. But we'd like to build more, and one of the pads, one of the blue pads, you mentioned, the one that's closest to the main entrance, that's got a foundation down. We put a foundation down fifteen years ago there. That was our spec building. We were ready to keep rocking and rolling. And that will be the first that we build, once most of the yellow has filled up. And our plan is to just continue to build it up.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, this is actually for staff. I'm not seeing-
Let me just see if we have any more questions for the applicant, and then we'll switch staff in there. Okay. No more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm not seeing in either our summary document or our electronic version of the motions, the options of our motions. We discussed the four different options. I'm only seeing one.
So the recommended motion from the staff report, Councilman Anderson, is alternative one from our.
Not seeing it. It's not showing up on my summary sheet. I need some coffee here.
It would be, it would be item one.
Thank you very much. Great job.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Jonathan, on the Planning Commission's recommendation to add a conditional use permit to approval versus making the change and the work would be done with administrative review is kind of the normal, is what you were bringing to the Planning Commission, was asking for the change of the handbook, and then all of the design and compliance and architectural and conditions that might be needed would be done through administrative review. Planning Commission asked that we put a conditional use permit on that. Have we done that with other mini storage? And what, what does that, I mean, I guess it's looking for additional protections, but doesn't the administrative review, or just that it wouldn't come to us, it wouldn't come to us or planning? We would have to trust that staff is doing. The administrative review would include all of the conditions, but I guess it takes it out of the Planning Commission and council's purview on those conditions? Am I reading that right, or am I, am I on the right track or no?
Mayor Lawson, members of the council, I am Armando Hernandez, the Assistant Community Services Director still. And-
Until the nineteenth.
Until the nineteenth. Yes, you are reading that correctly. So, you know, the administrative review process, basically, you know, we would be in receipt of an application for a project. We would review it relative to all of the conditions and the requirements of the Pioneer Meadows Plan Development Handbook, including the new proposed standards for self-storage. And yes, we would ultimately, you know, anticipate getting to an approval with conditions. And the difference between that and the conditional use permit process would be that we would not be sending out notices to the adjacent property owners. We would not be going to Planning Commission. They would not be conducting a public hearing. But otherwise, you know, the process would be handled through, again, by staff. That's the difference between what was recommended to the Planning Commission by staff and the recommendation that you are in receipt of from the Planning Commission.
So are there other mini storage or similar handbook changes that we have required the CUP be attached to?
We have. We, for, in the C2 zoning district, which is probably comparable to this GC district in Pioneer Meadows, a mini storage facility would require a conditional use permit process. The difference here, and the reason I think that staff felt that we were comfortable, you know, recommending to the Planning Commission that it be subject only to administrative review, is you have pretty specific design standards intended to make sure that, you know, anything that goes into that GC area of Pioneer Meadows is complying with the standards for Pioneer Meadows as a whole, including the standards that apply, for example, to the Rayleigh's. So that, you know, we felt that that provides for compatibility in terms of design. There are standards specific to self-storage that are being proposed with this amendment. And then the project would first have to go to the Pioneer Meadows Design Review Committee, the DRC. And we could only accept that application if it had been approved by the DRC. So we felt that with those requirements in place, that the conditional use permit was unnecessary, frankly. And that was the basis for our recommendation to the Planning Commission.
Is it also conditional use permit would be a longer, longer process, requiring more staff time, requiring more time in general, because it's going through the different, through the Planning Commission and to the council? Would, probably not substantially, but would increase?
There probably would be some additional time, certainly, you know, there's added time preparing for a Planning Commission item or preparing an item for Planning Commission. You know, generally, you would not see a conditional use permit except on appeal as a city council.
Got you. Okay. And the, so you're saying with administrative review, you have to comply with a handbook that already has standards that have to be complied with. Conditions that you would put on the project would be, would have to be in compliance with that handbook. And then you have the additional layer protection from the Design Review Committee with Pioneer Meadows themselves. So there's two protections of what the project would look like and compliance that would have to pass before would, before the developer could build, actually build the project itself.
Before they could move on to building permit, that would, and all of those conditions would have to be complied with.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any other question, Mr. Dare?
Yeah, we did receive a letter from the DRC, from Pioneer Meadows Master Association, and it has in here regarding approval and what can't be approved without them. And it's, did you guys get to see this? And is this accurate?
So Mayor Lawson, members of the council, again, Armando Hernandez, Assistant Community Services Director. We saw this today. This issue was raised, you know, at Planning Commission. This issue was raised, you know, at, at Planning Commission. Brandon Sendal, who is the attorney to the Planning Commission, has reviewed that, reviewed that then and has reviewed it again today. We, in, in the view of staff, this is, you know, not, not accurate, if you will. In order to amend the handbook, that application is submitted to the city and requires only that the applicant conduct a neighborhood meeting. They did conduct that neighborhood meeting. So DRC approval is not required, in staff's view, for a handbook amendment. It would be required, again, for a project. We believe that the language that's been excerpted here in the letter is the language that applies for project review. And so, you know, I think with that, I'll, you know, hand it over to, to Mr. Sendal, who, you know, can, can, can address it as well.
Thank you. Brandon Sendal, Senior Assistant City Attorney. I agree with what Mr. Renellis said. We looked at this before and I, I double-checked again about an hour or two ago when I, I saw the letter. The, the handbook, I'll, I guess I'll just specify on page, section two, page 12 specifies that amendments are through the, the Planning Commission and the city council. Later in, in section five, page three, it again says amendments are via, are through the administrator and then through the public process. That's outlined for amendments to a plan development handbook that's outlined under the NRS. So I agree. It's, it is the city council's decision to amend a handbook. Anything that goes before the DRC is more of a design review process. So like Armando said, any future submittal would go to the DRC, but not an actual amendment to the handbook.
Okay. I just, just wanna make sure it's clear to our, to even our community that's here as we, as we watch this and then for us as we're walking forward. I mean, it seems pretty interesting language for it only to fit into that one. I'm just reading this, is this accurate, accurate, actual language or did somebody change it?
It is, it is accurate language.
Because it, doesn't it seem pretty strong?
I, I think what, what happened, so in, in section two, this is the general outline of procedures in the handbook. That's where it's, it's pretty clear that it says amendments to the handbook go to the Planning Commission and city council. Section five deals with the plan review process for specific plans. And to be honest, I think the inclusion of the word amendment there was a typo because in that section it deals also with deviations. And deviations to the handbook, as you know, deviations aren't amendments to the handbook. It says, here's the standard that requires, say, 10 feet of a, 10 feet of setback. We want a deviation to that without actually changing the handbook itself. Those have to go to the DRC before they can be considered. So the language in there that, that says that the city council isn't gonna be an appellate body to, to the DRC applies to things that go to the DRC, which is a specific plan or a deviation to, to a standard in the handbook. There, there's no, there's no scenario under the handbook that I've seen in which an amendment to the handbook would go before the DRC.
Okay. Thanks for clarification.
And if, and if I may add, Councilmember Dare, I mean, you know, I, I think the confusion is not to be, is not unexpected entirely. There are instances, we do have handbooks where approval of a handbook amendment is required by example, for example, by a homeowners association. Not a design review committee, but a homeowners association. So, you know, again, there are handbooks that require that sort of approval prior to coming to the city, but this is not one of them.
Interesting. Okay.
Any other questions from the council?
Clarify something real quick. Before staff, please. So just to follow up what you just clarified for Councilman Dare, this, the DRC does not, does not right now, because we're just asking for an amendment to the handbook, the DRC is not involved in that. However, if this is approved, the actual, the actual design standards that have to be in compliance with the handbook has to go to them. It would come to them. And they're already saying what things they're in opposition to. So they would have to work with staff and with the developer to agree to whatever those design standards were of the project itself, correct? That's when the DRC comes in. Would be the project, not this amendment, to add this use.
That is correct, Councilmember Biden.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. You good? All right. Well, we got some public comment. First off, I'm gonna tell you that we have written correspondence, seven in favor, one opposed, the reference, Pioneer, Pioneer Meadows Master Association was opposed. So let's start off with Carlos Garcia and then Dan O'Day.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I think it's a great opportunity for the community, self-storages. There's, the houses that are getting built right now, there's not a big lots on them. So as me being a resident, wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna build a shed behind my backyard where my kids can play, you know, where I can put a swimming pool and I can keep all my storage tools and stuff in the storage. I think it's a great idea and I approve with it and it would help the community a lot. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Mr. O'Day, followed by Tom Green.
Thank you. My name's Dan O'Day. I am a resident and homeowner in Pioneer Meadows. I'd like to start by calling your attention to Sparks Municipal Code 20.02.012-G6. This covers the 10 items the city must find true in order to modify any plan. One of these is that the modifications to the plan may not be granted solely to confer a benefit on a private person. A private benefit of on any person, pardon. NRS 278 dot four A dot four 10 contains the same restrictions. These are covered both in our local code and in state law. We were shown the staff report a few minutes ago. In the findings sections, under PDI, or PDI, staff stated that they have found that this modification does not confer a private benefit on any person. The proposed handbook amendment, I'm reading from that report, will allow any current or future property owner to pursue the development of a self-storage parcel, facility on a parcel in Pioneer Meadows designated GC. Therefore, the proposed amendment will not solely confer a private benefit on a particular person. There are 30 acres, I believe, of GC property within Pioneer Meadows. This is spread over 11 parcels. Of those, 10 are owned by Pioneer Meadows Center LLC. The 11th is owned by United Federal Credit Union and has a fully developed bank and parking lot on it. It is less than an acre large. It's far too small to host a storage facility that meets city requirements and meets the requirements that are being proposed in the design guide. So I stopped by United Federal Credit Union a little while ago and I asked the staff if they were going to become a self-storage facility. They laughed. They thought that was very funny. They thought that was ridiculous and said that in no way could they foresee their property becoming a self-storage facility. I don't foresee that either. It's too small and too impractical for that. And Jonathan, I believe you had said a few moments ago that the only parcel within that GC Pioneer Meadows area-
Mr. O'Day, will you address us, please?
The only parcel in the GC Pioneer Meadows area that was appropriate for this was the parcel by Rayleys. Let's be realistic. Mr. Nguyen is the only person that can take advantage of this modification. He owns 100% of the undeveloped GC designated property and all of the GC designated property except for that inappropriate parcel owned by United Federal Credit Union. His lots are the only ones that would support such facility now or in the future. Despite what the staff report tries to justify, this still solely confers a private benefit on Mr. Nguyen and no one else. You know this, I know this, the staff likely knew it when preparing the report and the people gathered in this room can see it. This looks like a conflict because it is. And it's specifically the type of conflict that the Sparks Municipal Code and the Nevada revised statutes were designed to prevent. I urge the city council to reject this modification.
Thank you, sir. Tom Green, followed by, is it Jan Cotel? Did I get that name wrong? Janie? Yes? No? And, okay, so I'll just, you're in opposition though. Thank you. Duly note that. And then Margaret Spatz? Okay, you're up after. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Tom Green. I'm a resident of Pioneer Meadows. I'm the president of the Pioneer Meadows Master Association. I was going to read this letter, but apparently you guys have all had it and had a chance to review it. I, I would just bring to your attention a couple of things. During the meeting that the DRC had with Mr. Nguyen, he specifically described certain types of doors and how they would look. However, the written version of this includes, quote, "Any storage roll-up doors shall face inside the facility. Parallel parking is allowed in front of roll-up doors as long as 25-foot drive aisles widths are provided." So it kinda goes against what we're, what we're hearing verbally, that the doors would all be, quote unquote, "inside." It doesn't say that. It just says they face inside, meaning in, in our mind, it could be contemplated that they face one another inside the facility. So I think that needs some, some clarification. I'd also go back to, to your council's argument that that, that the language in there does not meet the standard which we say it does. And, you know, attorneys differ on this. We met with our legal counsel and that was how we came up with some of the opposition that we have. So I just reiterate that, that the language of the handbook is clear. I find it very, very frustrating that they consider this a minor change, a minor amendment to a handbook. Mini storage is not a minor amendment. That's why it requires special use permit in all these other jurisdictions, if you wanna call it that, the areas that the city has zoned. And I understand that we're, you know, in a planned unit development, so it's a different zoning process. However, we think it's, we think it's a severe change and deviation and we believe that the DRC should have been consulted as the handbook says. So I would just ask that, that you consider the opposition that the citizens have, have voiced. And clearly the Planning Commission had an issue with it, otherwise they would have approved it as it, as it sat. And I just ask that you, that you disapprove it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tom Green, followed by Margaret Spatz. Did I just, did I, or? Sorry, Tom.
Margaret.
Margaret, please. I'm sorry.
Margaret.
I get my left hand going and the right hand doesn't what it's doing. And then that's followed by Joni Hammond.
Stiff and sore from sitting.
You and me both.
I'll bet. You've got it worse than I do. Hi, I'm Margaret Spatz. I am a resident at Lowry and Wingfield Springs Hills Road. My house sits right on that corner. And I see my neighbors walking all day long. And it's wonderful. Kids on bikes, kids, teens on skateboards. It's the intent, the original intent of our community, that it was to encourage walking. Come home from work, get out, walk to Rayley's, walk, get a coffee, walk, walk, walk. That's the purpose and intent. What nobody's saying is you're changing, you're blowing up the plan. It's not a minor modification. It is a complete blowing up of the original plan. And I beg you, my neighbors are gonna be at risk crossing the street, trying with people and U-Haul vans. Come on, guys, this is a terrible plan. So please, please oppose it.
Okay, thank you. Joni Hammond, followed by Jean Indicott.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson. Would it be possible to put, before my time starts, to put the city map back up of that so I could point to a few things on the overhead?
Do we have it handy, Madam Clerk?
While he's doing that, I'll start, if that's all right with you. I'll wait.
I don't wanna start your time until-
Okay, thank you.
This one?
The one that-
I don't want you to miss out on any of your time.
Closer one, sure.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon again, Mayor Lawson. Thank you. And councilors, thank you for taking comment on this important issue. My name is Joni Hammond and I live in a house in Riada, which is directly adjacent to the new self-storage. Riada is a community of 237 houses closest to the proposal. I'm also representing the Riada Homeowners Association Board of Directors and 102 Riada community members. All of us oppose the proposed plan amendment to add self-storage to the list of permitted uses in the general commercial land use category. Here, I'm gonna go off script a bit. If you look at where, behind where they're proposing the storage-
Use that mouse, ma'am. You may be easier for you to point out for council.
If you look behind here, this is the six-foot wall the developer was talking about. These are people's backyards all along here. They're choosing, if you approve it, to put the outdoor storage next to the wall. That's the part in a self-storage, if you're familiar, that is the noisiest. You have RVs, you have boats, you have people coming and going. We have a boat that we have in a self-storage. People change their oil in there. It's dusty, it's noisy. The police have been called. I hear from these new developers, it's gonna be a really nice one. But where we store our boat, I would say it's pretty nice, too. And still those things happen. The noise, the added traffic. If you look over here, the roundabout and how they are gonna come in here, I can just see large RVs trying to get in there. That is gonna cause some traffic issues. Also here, there's a 12 to 15-foot walking path between the nature area and there's a wall there, too, that many people in our community, if you look right here, we walk here and we walk here and go out to the paths. So I guess if you're going to vote to approve this, I would request that this be moved, that the outside storage is not next to the homeowners there and that this pathway remains so that we can utilize it from our community. So as others have said, myself and the other people in the community, we request that you deny this. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Jean Indicott, followed by Sam Medrand? Did I get that right? You got mine, right? Jean, Jean, I can get that one. That's like Ed. It's pretty easy to spell.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson and city council members. My name is Jean Indicott. I'm here today representing the frontera at Pioneer Meadows Apartment Community, which along with the Lumina at Spanish Springs and the Trails at Pioneer Meadows, Meadows Rental Home Communities strongly supports the proposal to add self-storage as a permitted use in the Pioneer Meadows marketplace. Combined the three communities total 864 apartments and rental homes, virtually all of which are occupied within a mile and a half of the Pioneer Meadows marketplace. It's clear based on what we know of and hear from residents that additional local storage is badly needed and a high-quality facility like the one that's envisioned at Pioneer Meadows Marketplace would be especially attractive and convenient for them. On-site storage space for residents of the three communities is limited and with high demand, there currently are few available options for them elsewhere in the area. There's little doubt that many of our residents would be customers of a new, well-managed and attractively designed facility like the one that's envisioned for the Pioneer Meadows marketplace. And for these reasons, we urge you to approve the proposal before you today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sam from Domino's there. I should have just read Domino's. Then I would have saw you. Followed by Vicki Young.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Sam Adrano. I'm the area supervisor for the Domino's store at the Pioneer Meadows Marketplace. And no, I did not bring pizza today. I know that you guys are probably looking for dinner. But I'm here to speak in favor of the proposal before you. And the, 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 the easy thing to say is I'm in favor of it because it's a win-win-win situation for everybody involved. Is it perfect? No. But is it something that this community needs? Absolutely. I'm gonna share a personal story with you about what my life was like moving here. I moved to this area from the Laughlin Bullhead City area four years ago. And that whole situation almost became derailed for something as simple as I didn't have a place to put my stuff while I moved here because of the housing shortage in this area. I didn't know where I was gonna live. I couldn't find it quick enough, but I still had to move and I had a start time with the current company that I work for. And then I ran into another problem where I didn't have a place to store my stuff while I did these things. And it nearly derailed my ability to move to this community, which I've always wanted to live here. This is a, this is an opportunity to, to provide a need to this community that we do need. It is something that we've, we, even at Domino's, when we expand or build new stores, and some of you have been actually involved in some of those- and some of you have been actually involved in some of those buildings, we sometimes have to bring people in from out of the area for the construction crews, for the people who are actually going to run the store, the general managers, the assistant managers. We bring them in, and one of the things nowadays that has to happen is a place to store their stuff because of the housing market in our community. So one of the biggest things that I want you to, that I implore you to look at when you consider this proposal is, maybe there are people that are thinking about moving to your community who need this kind of amenity that just isn't offered in that particular part of your city in great extent right now. You do have a lot of new multi-purpose, excuse me, multifamily dwellings in that area. You have growth. How do I know that we got growth? Well, they order a lot of pizza. That store, that particular store has been getting busier and busier and busier and busier and busier, which of course, we like, but we don't want that to stop either. But we also got to staff the store, okay? And these are all things that people run into when they consider moving to your community. This offers one of those solutions. It's a win-win-win. You got to, I understand being in your position, having to balance people who've been here a long time, businesses and land planners and land use decisions that you have to make. I understand that, okay? One thing I'm asking you to consider, too, is the people who are thinking about moving to your community. This is something they need. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Vicky Young, followed by Jeff Spitzer.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for letting me speak. Personal story, I live in Sparks on Talladega Drive, and at this time, storage is out of pricing. There is none available. I have an RV parking spot that went from $95. August 1st, it will go to $149. I got a deal because I've been there a couple of years. Anyone else, it goes 180. I have one storage unit for my husband, who has maintenance and needs it for his equipment. It went from $95 to 185. That was a deal. New people get it for 240. I would love to see storage come out in this area. I think it's well-needed. I think the design that was rendered up there looks very nice, and it's been sitting vacant. Eventually, it would just be an eyesore. We need the business, and I would appreciate your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Spitzer, followed by Julie Riggs.
Good afternoon, Council and Mayor. This is complicated. I'm a long-term property owner in Pioneer Meadows and have been involved in the community since the beginning. Love going down to the Rayleigh's and the Starbucks every week. I think it's a great amenity for Pioneer Meadows and Wingfield Springs area. But I've also seen it since the initial development 15 years ago. Just stopped. Nothing's happened. Before I came to the hearing today, I went by there, and the vacant land that I've seen for 15 years was well-maintained and taken care of. When I stopped for lunch before I came here, in the Sparks Galleria, their parking lot was full of weeds, no stripes or nothing. So the applicant, they've done a great job, and I would like to see something happen there. There's plenty of land for more restaurants and all kinds of things, and I know there's a need for many storage in the area, so I'm in favor. I appreciate the time. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Spitzer. Next up, we have Julie Riggs.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Hello, my name's Julie Riggs, and I am the property owner of 1847 Sea Low Falls, and I'm in support of the self-storage proposal in the Pioneer Meadows Shopping Center. I think self-storage is a reasonable and needed use in this area. This property has been sitting vacant for many years, and I'd like to see something built here. I think self-storage would be a great use of the space and would benefit homeowners, renters, and business owners in this area. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Riggs. Do we have any other members of the public who would like to speak that haven't filled out a form? Or, Madam Clerk, do we have any more?
We have no additional public comment cards at this time.
Okay, so this time, we'll close public comment. Let me see if there are additional comments or questions from the council?
Yes.
Okay. Member Dare?
So we find ourselves in an interesting place. I guess this is why we are here, and I listen to everybody. We have a few hundred people who don't like it, and then a few people, 100, 100 people that do. We do have a master plan at large that we have put together, and that does include some new storage units going out on Vista. I think we all know that as well. We are growing, though, so we do see the need on that. My concern a little bit, that I'm still sitting on, is I think we still have a few hundred people who live right adjacent to this, and I'm trying to figure out, how do we help make sure that, I mean, we have Finding D and Finding F, public interest, mutual interest, those are, those are public, and I may have gotten the terms wrong, but we do have some public that are concerned and looking at something, and so we got to make a hard decision on that. And then I do want to ask staff, and I don't know if one of the staff member can come up, I just want to talk about the master plan for a second because it does bring me pause as well, knowing that if, let's say, this developer right here was counting on certain things to be in place because we had a master development, and then all of a sudden, we changed it to where across the street, he could put in something else. Is that a concern that we're ever concerned about?
Mayor Lawson, I'm a City Council. To address your question, Councilmember Dare, yes, I mean, it's something that, you know, the findings call us to consider. You know, I think the, from my perspective as your staff, with regard to the findings, you know, you don't have to be able to make every single finding in order to, you know, to approve a project, right? These are things for you to consider, and then, on the whole, you have to make a decision, right? So if there are findings that you, you know, the council doesn't believe that they can make, that doesn't mean that, you know, that automatically should lead to a denial on your part, if you will. There are considerations that the law and our code calls on you to take into account. So the findings that I think you're referring to, Councilmember Dare, are, in particular, probably Findings D, PDD, and PDE. And the, you know, what those findings ask the council to take into account is whether the proposed amendment, you know, furthers both the interests of the applicant in this case and the residents, the stakeholders, if you will, the other stakeholders. Finding PDE specifically to your, I think maybe more specifically to your question, asks whether, you know, the amendment would impair the reliance of the residents and owners upon the plan. If in your view, you know, the amendment would impair their reliance, that is potentially a basis for denial. Now, if on the whole, again, if on the whole, you've said, well, you know, there's, that doesn't, that isn't strictly the case, I mean, that doesn't, this amendment doesn't strictly further their interests, that doesn't mean that, on the whole, there isn't, you know, when you take everything into account, a basis for still approving the amendment. So if you want to, if you want to go down that path, I think the manager would probably ask that you, the mayor, for a recess so that we can, we can craft, you know, a basis for a denial, because that's not what we came forward to you with, you know, representing the Planning Commission's decision. So I hope that answers your question.
It does, it does. It just, I'm wrestling because we have, obviously, a mixed crowd, and I appreciate it, but then looking at my job, which is what I'm supposed to do, and I do have actually a big concern regarding the U-Haul sitting there with the homes in the backyard right there. That's, that's a legit concern I have, actually.
So Mayor, and I think maybe going back to Councilmember Anderson's earlier question about the motions, if you would allow me, I'd like to go through your, the alternatives one more time, just so that you understand what each of them are and how you might proceed here, and, you know, why you might choose one of the alternatives over the others. So again, the recommendation from Planning Commission to you is that you approve the requested addition of self-storage as a permitted use, subject to conditional use permit. You know, that, I guess, adds an additional layer of review and noticing so that the Planning Commission would consider a specific request when it came to them and potentially add conditions of approval after noticing in the public hearing, right? So that's, that's what they recommended to you. The second alternative here was for the council to adopt the Pioneer Meadows Development Standards Handbook as recommended by staff to the Planning Commission. So again, that would be through the administrative review process, right? And so if that's what the council chooses to do, then you are relying on your staff to apply these proposed standards for this additionally permitted use and approve it administratively and condition it through that process. The third alternative would be to deny the request. Again, we would ask for some, for a recess so we could, you know, craft a basis for that denial, if that's, if that's the council's pleasure. And really, what you're saying there is that self-storage, you know, isn't appropriate in this location in the Pioneer Meadows Plan Development Handbook, so we are going to deny it, and that's how we choose to go forward. And then the fourth option here would be to remand the request back to the Planning Commission with direction. So if you are concerned about, for example, the vehicle storage uses, or you want to get, you want to provide the Planning Commission some direction in terms of your particular concerns that you want them to address, you know, and that the applicant, working with staff, would, you know, basically take another crack at this because you think this is a probably, you know, should be a permitted use, but you're not comfortable with the standards that you've seen because, for example, they would allow RV storage, then that would be the appropriate course, in my view, for you to pursue today. So hopefully, you find that helpful in terms of considering your options here today.
So I think what I'd like to do, if there are no other questions for staff, is let's craft the motion and see if we get a second, and we'll go from there.
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Okay.
I'm just going to make a motion. I'm not going to make a big statement on why I've come to the position that I am right now, but, so the recommended motion, and I guess you might have to help me in the wording because I'm looking at the alternatives, and I, I do feel that the staff recommendation, adopting the ordinance to amend Pioneer Meadows Development Standards Handbook as recommended by staff to the Planning Commission, which would amend the final approved plan for Pioneer's Meadow Plan Development to add self-storage to the list of permitted uses in the GC, General Commercial Land Use category, as recommended by staff, so we keep it at an administrative review, and the DRC adopting Findings PDA through PDJ and the fact supporting these findings is set forth in the staff report. So my motion is to approve the staff recommendation, not the Planning Commission's recommendation for approval.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
Second by Ms. Vanderwell. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Don't have a screen yet.
Coming up?
Need a screen.
We're having.
There you go.
Who's first, the second?
Yeah, we need a, we need a small pause here, because the motion we have on the screen is not the motion, not representative of the motion that Councilmember Biden just made. So give us a second to square that away before we go on this thing, just to make sure we all have the same understanding of what's been said.
Spitzer's killing me, though. How really?
So what was the change in the motion?
I read the whole thing, but I...
But is not as recommended by the Planning Commission.
As recommended by staff. Alternative two.
Yes.
As recommended by staff.
But the rest was everything that's in this motion. I was trying to read. Well, I didn't read all of that. Was then, I remember those, it's a storage. Two minutes, I'll prove it. Storage. Yeah, and then the alternatives are not spelled out in, because the only approved motion was, oops, the one Paul, the only one I had to, was, it gave alternatives, but the motion as they stated was the Planning Commission motion, so I was trying to adjust.
Yes. Councilmember Biden, is that, did we get that right?
Yes, that looks good.
Okay. Are we all?
Is Diana good?
We're good?
I'm good.
Is my second uncle?
Okay, we're good with our motion and our second. With that, please vote. And the motion carries four to one with Christopher opposed. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We're down to item 12.1, comments from the public. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment at this time?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any additional public comment cards at this time.
Announcements from the mayor, City Council, and City Manager. Do I have any announcements from, anyone from the dius?
No second.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, actually, I just wanted to mention some, some people that volunteered their time this week. So we had, two years ago, Mayor Ron Smith presented to the Air National Guard here at the 152nd Air Wing when they were doing their training on resiliency. They had had a bout of, of some suicides, and he was there battling stage four cancer, but encouraging the airmen to, to fight a good fight, don't give up, and seek out mental health experts where needed. As they saw what has been going on in, in our national media and the sentiment, our sentiment of, excuse me, sentiment of some of our, our population that feels that law enforcement is evil and doing horrible things, and what we've seen is, is a high number of people that have left the profession as a result, as well as, here locally, we've actually seen law enforcement officers that have taken their own lives. So what, the 152nd Air Wing with Allison Pratt and the base commander, Colonel Ford, wanted to put together a program where they came and showed their support to our law enforcement. And so we had a group of airmen that came and gave a talk for several briefings. They were there at 5:30 in the morning and as late as 11 o'clock at night to connect with many of our, our law enforcement personnel, not just the folks on the street, but also those that are in the building that have to deal with some pretty ugly things, whether it's records and evidence or whatever it might be. They also were joined by the battalion commander for the Army National Guard, Colonel Lau. A couple veterans from the Vietnam War came and spoke, kind of relating their return to the US after their duty, that they went to serve their country and came back to pretty horrible circumstance back then. So I just want to commend these people, Paul Walters, Russ Mann, that are local veterans of, of the Vietnam War. Keith Plache was there from Reno PD, Troy Stormin from the Reno Vet Center, as well as numerous... as numerous airmen and women that were there showing support and encouraging our law enforcement. So I just want to say thank you to all of them. They did a fantastic job. In fact, there was one briefing that the members of service outnumbered the officers just there showing their support. So I just want to say a big thank you to all of them, and likewise, thank you, Chief Craftworth, and for all of your men and women that serve our city.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson. There are three items that I want to announce. The first is that we are not having a second meeting this month. Just reminding everybody, we are taking our traditional summer break, so no July 26th meeting this year. The second is that this Thursday, as part of the Third Thursday event, we are going to have a Sparks Art Walk to show off the new art down in Victorian Square. Public tours beginning at 5:00 PM from Lillard Park, right there next to the Depot Gallery. So looking forward to lots of participation there. And then finally, the following Thursday, we're going to have another Hello Summer Celebration down at Rock Park. We're going to have a Free Rockin' on the River event at Rock Park from 5 to 8:00 PM with live music, dancing, and food trucks, and hope lots of folks can show up again because the first one was a great success and a lot of fun. Thank you.
Mr. Dare?
Yeah, I just want to say, Fourth of July, the celebration was amazing. Thank you to our fire department and police and everyone down there. It was safe and awesome. We had tons of people, and it's so exciting to be open again. So fantastic. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, with that being said, we're going to my favorite part of the agenda is adjournment.
In a moment, we're going to adjourn the redevelopment agency meeting, so if Council and Mayor, staff could stay around. I will call the order in a second when I get it all up on our screen. Pretty ready? Okay, Lisa?
You're creeping over in my space.
Okay, I'd like to call the order, the Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting of Monday, July 12th, with a roll call.
Chairperson Bibby?
Here.
Agency members Abbott?
Here.
Vanderwell?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Dare?
Here.
Chief Legal Officer Adams?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Crutts?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Opening, going to number three, public comment. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment.
Okay, seeing no public comment. Item 4.1, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion.
I actually have a vote button on this one.
I know, you could, okay. We have a motion to approve. The agenda is submitted by Agency Member Lawson, with a second by Agency Member Vanderwell, correct?
Correct.
Okay, please vote. Okay. Motion passes unanimously. So we'll move on to item 5.1, consideration discussion, possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting for June 28th, 2021. Do I have corrections, additions, or a motion to approve? I see a motion, motion by Agency Member Abbott?
Yeah, motion to approve.
And a motion to second by Agency Member Anderson?
I second.
Okay. Motion is second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 6.1, consideration and possible acceptance of the report of the claims and bills proved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of June 12th, 2021 through June 24th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion by Agency Member Dare?
Move to approve.
And second by Agency Member Vanderwell?
Yeah.
Motion and a second. Please vote. Motion is approved unanimously. Moving on to item, agenda item 8.1, comments from the public. Do I have any comments from the public? Seeing none. Close item 8.1, 8.2, announcements from the agency and chief administrative officer. Any announcements? Seeing none. So you know what's coming up next. Item number nine, we adjourn. Thank you.